Thank you all for coming. I'd like to now call the meeting to order for the May 8, 2018 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. So now I'm going to ask the council if there are any questions on the consent calendar, starting with Councilman Avery.
I have none.
Mr. Piattar. Mrs. Dixon.
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon.
I have none.
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
I have a very brief question. So Dave, as a follow-up question on number three dealing with the approval and portering issue, there's a $600,000 not to exceed and the funding requirements that it said additional funding will be requested on the budget checklist. I was just curious if we're committing to it as a contract matter, will that show up on a budget checklist or just straight in the budget?
So, thank you, Mr. O'Neill, for the question. Our budget checklist does kind of include two types of categories, things that are optional and alternative for you and things that finance will put on there that are really not an option to approve, and that would indeed be part of the latter category if we've approved the contract. But it's, think of the budget checklist as always an amendment to the proposed budget, and it cleans everything up that may be adjusted between now and between time this is printed and the beginning of the fiscal year.
I'll start thinking of it that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first study item is the charter boat discussion, and I have to recuse myself because I have a rental boat business on the harbor.
Okay. Is there a staff presentation on this item?
Yes, there is. Thank you, Mayor Protem O'Neill. Our Harbor Commission Chair, Bill Kenny, is going to present the recommended topics for, that the Harbor Commission is going to be studying on the charter industry.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor Protem O'Neill, members of the city council, my name is Bill Kenny, current Chair of the Harbor Commission. We're here this afternoon to discuss the issue of the charter industry in Newport Beach. As one of the Harbor Commission's objectives, which you all approved, was the creation of an ad hoc committee to study the charter industry in Newport Harbor. First slide, Chris. That ad hoc committee is requesting guidance from you this afternoon for the topics that you would like for us to study. Some of the suggested topics are, how many charter boats should be operating in Newport Harbor? And is there a good size, a bad size, a maximum size for the charter fleet? And we're referring now to the harbor tour boats or the party boats, weddings, reunions, businesses, events, just general public, et cetera. We are not referring to sport fishing charters or boats that would actually leave the harbor. We're dealing only with those who would stay in the harbor. The questions again are, some of the boats too big? Are there too many? If so, should there be any sort of an appropriate amortization period as we reduce, if we chose to do so, the number of boats in the harbor? Another one of the issues is gray water discharged by the charter boats. Today, it is not illegal for the charter boats to discharge gray water, and gray water would be anything that came out of a sink or a garbage disposal is dumped directly in the bay. Should this be prohibited? And if so, should there be some sort of an amortization period to allow time for the charter fleet to retrofit their boats to actually capture gray water as they would black water or water that would go into a holding tank? Third item is the passenger tax. Is there a better way to structure the tax that we're currently collecting? Could there also be a fee in addition to that tax to pay for review and enforcement? And one of the things that we're probably going to recommend is that we step up enforcement of the charter fleet, that we check them on a more regular basis to make sure that they are conforming to all of the requirements of their marine activities permit. Fourth is an existing analysis of other harbors and their charter operations. How are they dealing with their own standards, taxes, fees paid, regulatory issues, guidelines, et cetera? Try to learn from those who are in the same predicament that we are. And fifth is the current marine activities permit. One of the things we want to do is to go through that permit, hopefully make it more relevant, and again, work on how we enforce that marine activities permit. The question becomes, is there a better vehicle that we can use? Do we use a lease or a franchise agreement or an operating license? Or do we stay with the current activities permit and just update it? Sixth is an analysis of what do the charter boat fleets contribute to Newport Harbor in terms of revenue? And that would be both direct and indirect. Some of that, I believe, was done last year in the study that was performed by, I think it was Newport and Company, that came up with the revenue estimates that were generated indirectly and directly by the harbor. Seventh is parking for the charter boat customers. How do the new ride-sharing platforms, Uber and Lyft, affect and change parking demands? Second, are the current parking requirements adequate for today? And obviously, again, from an enforcement standpoint, is the charter fleet actually conforming to the requirements that they are obligated to conform to in the marine activities permit? And then eight would be any other topics that should be considered. And with that, what we're really looking for is direction from the council. And that would conclude my remarks.
Okay. Why don't you stay up? We'll, you may get some questions. All right, Ms. Dixon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kenny. A couple of questions, and thank you to the Harbor Commission for taking on this. Couple of questions. How do you propose to study these items? What would be your method of study?
As we've done in the past, we have an ad hoc committee, which is under one of the functional areas of our objectives. That ad hoc committee would go out and collect data, contact public agencies in other harbors. We would have stakeholder meetings, as we've done in the past, bring in the charter fleet. We want to certainly make them a part of this process. Bring in the general public. These would be noticed meetings where we would basically put all of these issues on the table and have a healthy, open forum.
Oh, very good. You mentioned on item seven, parking. I think your last item, didn't say it on your slide, but you did say it verbally. I'd like to better understand or look to the possibility of including a parking management plan within the marine activities permit process so that there is a parking plan required for every company that operates on our waters?
They're currently, the marine activities permit today currently requires the charter fleet to basically self-park. I don't know all the details, but I'm sure Mr. Miller does. One of the issues, I believe, is enforcement. There are requirements, I'm not sure that we're adequately enforcing them today. Again, as we make this transition, and now we have a harbor master and code enforcement, we'd like to see, you know, better enforcement of the requirements that are currently in place.
And then hours of operation, will you be looking at? The charter fleet's hours of operation, days a week, hours of operation?
That was not a topic, but it certainly is a good one. The marine activities permit today does limit hours of operation, and it also limits amplified noise. And I believe hours of operation cease at 10:00 PM in the current marine activities permit, Chris?
That's the noise.
That's the noise, okay.
The charters can go later if they're quiet.
And that's exactly why we're here. I think that's a great topic.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. And the broader subject of marine activities permits, I know you're just focused on charter, is the Harbor Commission looking at all commercial entities that operate in our harbor but may not have a marine activities permit? How would we get at that?
That is a very, very good comment. Today, the marine activities permit is a universal permit, and all of the business enterprises that are operating on the harbor technically are required to have a marine activities permit. However, the, and we're going to talk about this in a moment, the stand-up paddleboard rental operators are using the same form of permit that the charter fleet is. And one of our objectives is to analyze that permit and tailor it to the different businesses so that would be different.
Do we have certainty that every commercial entity that operates on our waters has a permit?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
That's enforcement.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
We'll touch on that in a moment.
All right, thanks.
Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Piattar.
Commissioner Kenny, thanks for taking this thing head-on. Your outline is really good. I like the comments that Diane made. Are you looking at smaller charters, too, that stay inside the harbor? Are you looking all the way down to, you know, the electric boat crowd, or how far down are you going for charters?
Councilmember Piattar, good question. We're looking at the fleet of boats that actually brings people aboard and has a captain. And those would be the ones that operate in the harbor, they don't leave the harbor. So for example, if you have a fishing boat, let's say you have a six-pack boat that takes five or six people out on a fishing trip, they would not be part of this study because they're not really operating within the harbor. With respect to rental operations, whether it be a stand-up paddleboard or a Duffy rental or a sailboat rental, that would be separate and distinct. So if you have a captain and there are licensing requirements, if you actually have a captain and you bring on passengers for hire, and those would be the ones that would be technically included within that definition charter.
Good. So anyway, that's the intent, is to include all those at the captain's level is your distinction?
Yes, sir.
So a rental generally doesn't require a captain, so you don't have that.
But for clarification, as we look, as we look at our other objectives, when we look at a marine activities permit, anyone that's renting any kind of a vessel, whether it be a paddleboard or a sailboat or an electric Duffy or even a jet ski, would be required to have a marine activities permit. And we want to deal with safety in those marine activities and tailor each one of those businesses to a specified type of permit.
Perfect. I'm covered, thanks.
Mr. Avery.
Commissioner Kenny, would this include a review of the number of cruises that occurred in the last year or two from all charter boats above a six-pack operator, so captain vessels, and maybe the number of passengers, so we get some idea of the level of intensity of the charter boat industry, just how large it is? That included here, or is that something maybe in the other category?
Remember, Councilmember Avery, we're here for direction from the council. That's certainly a great comment, and that's something that we could look at. One of the issues that we do want to look at, again, when we get back to enforcement, we need to make sure that the current fleet is properly reporting the number of passengers, the number of times they leave the dock, the amount of time they leave the dock. But that's a great, great comment.
And the committee should be aware of that these licensed vessels by federal mandate must carry, have passenger lists and logs of every cruise, so they should be easily obtainable.
Yes, sir. And again, it's enforcement. We need to have the staff to actually work with the charter fleet and make sure that they're properly reporting, both to the city and to the other agencies.
And finally, just a general comment, that it's, I think it's really important, and I know the commission feels this way, and I know council does, that we're not looking to do anything here except get a better handle to serve the residents of this town and guests and be partners with the charter fleet, which we consider an important part of the harbor, important part of access to the water, to the whole feel of our town and just being welcoming and getting more people on the water. So this is something that I feel the city, over decades, has not done a good job of sort of reaching out to charter industry and trying to work with charter industry as partners, and I see this as an attempt to do that, to bring them in and make it better for everybody. Thank you.
And I would concur with you, sir. That's why we want to have the stakeholder meetings and bring the charter fleet in at the very beginning, so they can be a big part of this.
So, any other comments? All right, I'll make just one real quick. On the discussion about the passenger tax, the question of whether it's a better, there's a better way to structure, whether there ought to be a fee, if the Harbor Commission is going to review that, my suggestion would be that part of the analysis is also taking into account the political considerations that would require a restructuring of a tax, which would require five council members out of seven to put it on a ballot, and then it would have to go out to the voters. The other part of that would probably be that if you're analyzing whether there ought to be a fee, I suspect that there would not be the appetite to add a fee on top of the tax, so it would probably be more likely that we would be looking at going to a fee structure as opposed to the tax. I doubt that there would be the appetite to do essentially what would be double taxation on that one. So that would probably, that would be my suggested analysis on that one, is to determine whether we ought to move to a fee-based structure rather than the tax system we've already got in place.
Got it.
Any other comments? Okay. We'll go out to public comment then on this, on this particular item. Okay, seeing none. We'll move to the next item.
And just briefly, Mayor Duffield also has a conflict on this item related to his business interests, so he won't be returning yet.
Okay. Staff report.
Same thing. Chair Kenny will give a brief presentation on the Harbor Commission's stand-up paddleboard recommendations.
Mr. Chair.
Again, Mayor Protem O'Neill, members of the council, Bill Kenny, Chairman of the Harbor Commission. As Councilmember Avery well knows, the Harbor Commission has studied stand-up paddleboard safety in the past, certainly when he was the commissioner. At that time, it was the position of the Harbor Commission after stakeholder meetings that no actions should be recommended, but that that subject matter should be readdressed in the future. Early last year, one of the commissioners brought this issue of SUP safety back to the committee, to the Harbor Commission, and an ad hoc committee was set up to study paddleboard safety in Newport Harbor. We held stakeholder meetings, which included some of the rental company operators and members of the private paddleboard community. In addition, the ad hoc committee attempted to interview each of the 20 paddleboard rental companies operating here in Newport Beach. Unfortunately, last summer, a young man who rented a stand-up paddleboard drowned in Huntington Harbor in 10 feet of water. The relevance of our ad hoc SUP committee certainly was heightened after that event. The committee made recommendations which were adopted by the Harbor Commission, and we're pleased to bring those recommendations to you this afternoon. As I said, the Harbor Commission, ad hoc committee was formed to study SUPs in Newport Harbor. Following the stakeholder meetings, the ad hoc committee decided that the primary focus should be on the rental company operators, not the private paddleboards. And again, our recommendations were approved in October 2017. The recommendations are as follows, that the city harbor master coordinate with code enforcement to ensure that all rental companies have a marine activities permit. And as an aside, and I'll mention this, actually, we actually attempted to interview each of the 20 paddleboard rental companies doing business here in Newport Harbor. Those companies that have physical addresses in Newport Harbor. We were not out to be police persons, but only seven of those actually had valid marine activities permits. So code enforcement, again, is important. Second, we recommend, and actually have already taken this task on, to revise the safety pamphlet and make it available to the rental companies and to the general public. The previous ad hoc committee that studied SUP safety created a very good pamphlet, and we've now, as you can see, updated that pamphlet, and we'll have that available both for the rental companies and for the general public at large. Next, require that all rental SUP boards and manually-powered vessels, and these are rental now only, be fitted with leashes, and that rental companies encourage their passengers, or their customers, to use them. While stand-up paddleboards are required to have a personal flotation device, you're not required to wear it, it just has to be on the board. When a paddleboarder falls, the natural inclination is for the paddleboarder to fall away from the board. Winds and currents can then push the paddleboard further away from the paddleboarder. With a leash properly used, that paddleboarder always has a connection to the paddleboard, can get back to that paddleboard. And finally, our goal is to try to improve the educational procedures at the source of renting stand-up paddleboards. The Harbor Commission recommends that we add the following conditions to the marine activities permit. Number one, that all rental companies distribute the safety brochure and require their customers to acknowledge that they've read it and understand it. Second, that all rental companies acknowledge in writing with each customer that they can actually swim. If they can't swim, then our recommendation is the rental company must require that renter to wear a personal flotation device or life vest. We believe that these recommendations, as implemented, will significantly limit the potential for a tragedy like the one that took place in Huntington Harbor. And with that, we would ask that you accept those recommendations.
Okay. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenny. A couple of questions. Now, are the, while these are recommendations to the rental companies, are they, are they consistent with the requirements of, I guess it's the Coast Guard, or at least the Harbor Patrol has been known to issue citations to paddleboarders lacking a whistle, lacking flotation device? I don't know about the leash. So could you clarify if this is consistent and how, if we're not requiring, or if the rental companies are not requiring, are we inadvertently setting our patrons up for getting a citation from the Harbor Patrol? If they're not doing all of the above?
The, let me answer that in two different ways, if I can. The inland rules, which are, it's basically the vehicle code on the water, requires every vessel, and that would be any kind of a human-powered craft, to have aboard both a personal flotation device and a sounding device. In other words, a life vest and a whistle. However, you're not required to wear that life vest, you just need to have it on the board. So the Harbor Patrol can and has cited paddleboarders and kayakers for not having those two devices. What we're suggesting is a city requirement that the rental company operators equip their boards with leashes for use by their customers. We're not requiring it, but we do think that it's a step in the right direction. So technically, based upon our recommendations, no one would get cited for not using the leash, there would just be a strong recommendation that they use it. Secondly, with respect to education, most of the rental company operators that we spoke with were not adequately educating the safety measures that we think are necessary. And again, I don't want to take too much time, but there is a rental company operator operating in Alameda Bay who does an absolutely fantastic job of educating renters on how to use paddleboards and paddleboard safety. And we're trying to basically, you know, copy that model, if you will.
Well, so do, in your review, an audit of the rental companies, are they all, including a life preserver and a sound device with each rental?
Some of them were not, no.
So then technically, or ostensibly, they could be cited then from Harbor Patrol?
Actually, their customers could be cited, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Commissioner Kenny, I like what you're saying. I guess the question is, is this something that we include in Title 17 to start to enact, including our marine activities permit and the requirements for it? What's the next step?
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's something, I guess, maybe for the city attorney. So if the council so directs, then what we'd be looking at is, we're looking at Title 17 redo this summer, anyway. Are we talking about just taking these and incorporating those into that change and then enacting a revised ordinance?
Yeah, definitely. If you, if you're looking to include these provisions into the marine activities permit, we can definitely move in that direction. So I think we're just looking for guidance of what you would like to have done.
Okay. That was, the next question is, how do we direct the next step? Thanks.
Do you want to answer that also? Did you get the answer that you were looking for? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, if there's a consensus of the council, then we can take direction this evening. We just want to record, you know, who's in favor and who's against any of the particular measures.
Okay. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. I like the educational component. To some extent, when these paddleboarders go out in the water, they're assuming the risk, and I think that it's hard to come up with regulations in a way that insulates that risk too much, because it's part of the nature of being out in the ocean or in the harbor and on a paddleboard. The leash makes a lot of sense on a surfboard for two reasons. One, because if you don't catch the wave or you fall, which I inevitably do all the time, it's going to stop the board from going towards the sand too far, and it could also protect from hitting a swimmer or another surfer that's nearby. In the case of a leash on a stand-up paddleboard, I can think of some really bad scenarios where the leash would keep the person tied to the paddleboard and perhaps get caught in propeller or be between a vessel that's coming towards them. Wouldn't it be better if there's space between the two entities? So I don't think, if someone wanted to wear a leash, I would have no problem with that, but I don't think it would make sense for us to force the companies to install a leash, because I think there are many scenarios where it could make the situation more dangerous. I certainly understand what you're trying to get at, and I think that education and encouraging these individuals to wear a life vest because they desire to is better than to compel them. Just to give you my thoughts thus far. I appreciate how much tension your commission has put in this matter. You're always taking safety very seriously and avid boaters. You are the best people to explore it. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Good job, Commissioner Kenny, on this. You've certainly gone deeper than the original charge was. I'm, I don't want to get into the weeds here, but you're thinking about item number four, that each operator distribute the safety brochure to its customers and acknowledge that they have read and understood it. And also that each operator acknowledge in writing with each customer that they can swim. Is that going to be something that would incorporate it into the rental agreement of the SUP, a signature?
Yes, that would be our-
It would just be included wording on the SUP rental agreement, right?
That would be our recommendation. Again, by way of background, the rental company that operates in Alameda Bay actually requires prospective renters to watch a video and take an on-water test. And so those people are at least checked out on a paddleboard and understand winds and currents and how not to approach a dock. You know, when you're paddling standing up and you go the wrong way and you fall onto the dock, you can hurt yourself. It's our understanding that the man that drowned in Huntington Harbor could not swim.
And the life vests would be provided by the customer as opposed to the renter?
The rental companies should be obligated- The rental companies should be obligated to provide the required safety equipment, not just a life vest, but also a personal sounding device or a whistle.
And the leash.
But again, the law doesn't require you to wear it.
Right.
The law requires you to have it.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm, I'll echo a little bit of what Mr. Muldoon said. You know, one of the things that paid a little bit of attention to what's been going on. So I think actually this, this week or this weekend, I think it's this week, there's the National Boating Safety Advisory Council meeting up in Oregon dealing with the Federal Advisory Commission to the Coast Guard. And if I recall correctly, back in October of last year, the Coast Guard had gone ahead and passed a, at least a resolution on this issue that would say that a person who is going ahead and going out on the water in a sup would actually be required to either have a leash or a flotation device. And they're going through the regulatory process right now. I'd like to not get too far ahead of the Coast Guard on this one. And part of the reason I'm thinking that way is because when you're looking at the, the national safety numbers at least, despite the fact that this, we've seen a pretty massive increase in the popularity of the, of stand up paddleboards, last year actually had fewer fatalities than the year before and it seems to be getting actually safer rather than going the opposite direction. And there's no question that one is a tragedy and we certainly experienced one in Huntington Beach. Do you happen to know also in the Huntington Beach situation where the gentleman was actually provided a, a life vest and he just chose not to wear it?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. I think I had heard something along those lines. So the, I thought, my thought is basically that without doing a pretty aggressive safety review, rather than partially viewing it a little bit as a nuisance out there, that's a different kind of regulation than a safety one, I'd really love to know a lot more about whether safety regulations are required. And that admittedly would require probably quite a bit of study and a different kind of study than, 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 than an anecdotal one. And I wouldn't anticipate the Harbor Commission to have done something like that. But if we're going to be imposing additional safety regulations, we'd probably look to staff to make a determination similar to the way that we would with cars and anything else that has exposure out there. So I'm not a, I'm not as much a fan of, of increasing requirements on folks until we actually have a really good idea of whether the safety, whether there's actually the safety need. But certainly having an education component seems to be fine. I'd probably want to actually see the, the brochure also before we would agree to put it as part of a marine activities permit. I, I saw it, I just couldn't read it. Any other comments? Questions? No? Okay. Public comments on this item?
My name's Kelly Carlson. My husband and I own Bellboa Water Sports. We rent paddleboards and jet skis. And safety is like our big thing that we constantly are really putting towards our customers because this is our livelihood. If we have someone die, we have someone get really hurt, there goes our livelihood. We started renting paddleboards in 2012 and from the very beginning, my husband grew up on the peninsula, he's a very avid surfer, avid water everything, and he said, "All boards need to have a leash because if you fall off that board, you're still connected to it. You can get back to it. And if you aren't a strong swimmer and you fall in the harbor and your board goes 40 feet away from you, you might not be able to get back to it." And I totally do understand the idea that you're then connected to this thing and there's other safety hazards, I guess, being connected to it. But I almost compare it to like, your seatbelt could also hurt you, but it could also save your life. And there was also a gentleman who drowned in Santa Barbara last year. And when I talked to our carrier about that situation, his big thing was the guy didn't have a leash on and he wasn't a strong swimmer and had no life jacket. And they didn't find his body for hours later. And they said, "If he would have had a leash on, he probably would have survived." So I just wanted to say, I think that the, looking at the leashes is an awesome idea because we have customers come back all the time who've never used a leash before and they say how great it was because when they fell off, the board was right there. Especially for young kids and stuff like that. And on the first item, because I only want to come up once, as far as looking at all the rental charter and all that stuff, I think it's a great idea. I think we need some safety out there on the water because it can be really scary sometimes during the summer. The other thing that I would love to see added is the use of the pub, public docks in the harbor. There are a lot of operations who are launching their paddleboards from the public docks, who might be using the public docks for some kind of boat rental, whatever that might be. And that right there, like, you've got to have a dock. Like, if you're running a business in this harbor, you need to have a dock location that you're paying for because then you are down there with your customers and making sure that when they get on that board or they get on that boat, they pull away knowing what they're doing. We've had quite a few customers that when they go to get on a paddleboard or they go to get on a jet ski, they do something so stupid that we tell them, "Sorry, you're not going out because of what you just did the second you got on that vessel." And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Any other final thoughts? Nope?
Mr. Mayor Protem, just to get some additional guidance, I think I kind of heard two potential paths from the council. One, maybe along the lines of what Mr. Muldoon and Mr. O'Neil said, was refine the educational materials and provide some guidance and recommendations, but basically wait for any new regulation, in part to follow what the Coast Guard says. That kind of sounds like one path. The other path would be to formally incorporate some of the commission's ideas such as leashes into Title 17. Would you folks be comfortable kind of picking a path one or two today so we know what to bring back to you?
All right.
Pick the ones?
You can put your hand up, one or two.
You're a two, Scott?
Councilmember Avery, you, one or two? One.
Okay. I see four people with one. Okay. What's that? Okay, I did. Yeah.
You got it?
Sorry. So Mr. Hurdman, Mr. Muldoon, Mr. O'Neil, Mr. Avery with one, Mr. Piattar and Ms. Dixon with two. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we'll bring the mayor back in.
All right. Next item is the budget highlights and areas of focus.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is indeed part one of two study session items. The next one will be the following week and you could always ask for a third one if you're really excited by this. I only say that half facetiously. So each year about this time, we start to present the proposed budget to you and to the community and to the finance committee. And we've already begun with that. What I wanted to do versus slog through the entirety of the budget with you, which we did many, many years ago and we put a lot of people to sleep, we, I, I've switched to kind of some overall themes. So the theme of today, and you can always correct it, cut things short, expand things, ask for things to come back two Tuesdays from now, so this is fully in your charge or your control. But the theme of today is Dan's going to spend a little bit of time kind of focusing on the revenue side with the expectation that the expenditure side we talk about with some exceptions next time. But so focus on the revenue side, what are, what are property taxes, sales tax, everything looks like. And then we're going to go into some key issues that have kind of popped up just in the course of developing the budget. And Dave's going to talk about some of those, Dave Webb is, involving the CIP items that we love your direction on. Carol's going to talk about two proposed reorganizations, one involving the harbor, one involving Public Works and MOD. And then depending on, on time, and I was kind of allocating an hour for this, including questions, Dan may come back with his always scintillating pension discussion. If we don't have time for that, we could always bring that back next time. So unless there are any concerns about that, and again, feel free to chime in with questions or comments. This is your chance, one of your many chances. I'm going to hand it over to Dan.
Excuse me. Councilman Muldoon.
Yes, just out of abundance of caution, when it comes to the items related to the streetlight, I work with a company that involves in the wireless telecommunications business and there's some involvement sometimes with lights, so I'll be recusing myself for business purposes at that time if Mr. Harp can take note. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Dave has a way of saying things so delicately. I think what he's trying to, to, to protect you from is me, me boring you to death with, with the numbers part of the presentation, so.
Never, never.
Anyways, here we go.
We were born for this.
Oh. So the key budget dates that some have already transpired, we disseminated the budget on April 10th. We had finance committee, first finance committee review on April 8th. Here we are, May 8th, and we're, we're doing this partial presentation. We're going to have another review with finance committee on the 10th. And then we're going to have a joint meeting of, of this, of, of the finance committee and council during the study session. And then on the evening agenda, the only thing on the 22nd is we'll be setting the hearing for June, for, for June 12th. And that's, that's the date that we hope to adopt the, the budget with, with everybody's discussion. And May 24th is reserved for another finance committee meeting to, for the finance committee to develop recommendations for council as, as part of their charge, essentially whether to move forward with the budget or not. And then, of course, we're required by our charter to adopt a budget by July 1. So we're excited to share kind of a new citizens transparency portal. If you notice, the, the, the quick link down below will bring you to an interactive budget portal. I think it's pretty cool. If I can actually get there. Okay. So this is our website and I would recommend all of the public go through the electronic version or the interactive portal of the budget. The printed budget is bifurcated by departments and so that if you want to know something about the budget, you have to go through department by department and then within the department to each division. And if you want something to see, see another cross section of the, of the budget department wide, then, you know, you, you have to add everything up. So this is the police department and this is kind of the traditional view. You would, you'd open up the police department and you would see the individual divisions. Of course, you can still go through that mode and say, well, what's, what makes up the largest parts of, of patrol? You can see most of it's the salary and benefits of the, of patrol. You can drill down on maintenance and see what's, you know, what are the major factors. But you can also go back and say, "Well, I don't really care about departments so much. I really want to see, I want to take a look at the, the budget across all departments." And you can see the major drivers of our budget, still salary and benefits. And you can see the original is gray and the prior year revised budget is, is in blue. And then again, then you can say, okay, well, the second largest is, is the repayment of our pension unfunded liability. And you can drill down on, on, on any one of those figures and you can see the key drivers of the pension UAL by department. Again, you can drill down even further and, and, and see by division. Within division, you can get down to a very granular level. And then for those that prefer to get into the weeds, you can go all the way down to the object level and look at, you know, there's 370 categories of expenditures that you can go page by page. But I find this to be a much simpler way of getting to the, to the meat of expenditures because you can slice it and dice it the way you want. You can look at it also by fund, program and division as well. So a, a great tool, if you're not aware of it, again-
Excuse me, Dan.
Yes, sir.
Dan, may I, thank you, Mayor. Just to amplify what you're saying, so as the viewing audience can follow along, I, I wholly support and agree with your comment that this is an easy tool. If you want to go to that prior image, just click on that again. I just want to make a point.
Um.
Did we lose it? Okay. Just for those of us who are numeric and like to look at these things and, and enjoy them, the visual impact of what this horizontal bar chart, chart indicates, because these are real numbers, you use the term original, that in other words means proposed, correct? For the proposed budget?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, that's okay. So, and in the dark blue, the gray is proposed and the blue is prior year, correct?
It is prior.
So to do a visual up and down the column, you could see going forward in our proposed planning, it's holding relatively flat with exception in a few key areas, pension and insurance, if I recall, that we are going beyond prior year. So this is a quick eyeball that spending is holding fast in a disciplined way to prior year spending. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that point. Thank you.
But for those that aren't, aren't comfortable with the interactive portal, there is still the traditional budget link, which is just our URL forward slash budget. Will give you various PDF static documents. If you want to download the entire CIP or the entire operating budget, you can still download it there. There are also quick links to individual department pages, salary information, employment contracts and even more budget news on, on that page. So this is a very confusing slide. I've, I've, I've always struggled with it, but we always have a challenge. Fortunately, we end the year with a surplus. And so that's part of our resources that we have to balance, balance the budget each year. And at some point, we can't just accumulate surpluses year over year, we have to come up with a plan to spend it. So you could see in year 1516, we had a $10.5 million surplus. In 1617, we had almost a 20, a $12.5 million surplus. And in 1516, that 10 million was reprogrammed in the 1718 budget. The 1617 budget is being proposed to be expended in the 1819 budget. And what this, what this shows in total is that total resources, less, you know, restricted revenues that, that can't be spent on anything. So we get down to total spendable resources, less all uses. We're, we, we're showing, we have a balanced budget. We had a balance, quite a big surplus in 1718 and we have a balanced budget in 1819. But just to warn you, as you go along, this number gets chipped away when we do budget amendments at each council meeting. When you do an amendment from unappropriate general fund surplus, it reduces, it reduces this number. So that's not a unending bucket.
So Dan, just a quick note on that last slide. The, that 12.4 million in the revised budget under 1718, if I recall correctly, last year when you were doing this presentation, the, the number that was at the bottom was actually very close to that 827,000. I mean, it was, we, we don't, we don't budget toward a surplus. We certainly have, maybe have a, a smaller surplus or, or projected surplus year over year, but we certainly didn't project a 12 and a half million dollar surplus.
Correct.
So I just want to point that out. There is a difference between revised budget and proposed budget. Proposed budget, revised budget actually takes into account the actual accounting and then the proposed budget is what we anticipate. And those can change dramatically, as you can see. Anyway, thanks, Dan.
Yes. So to one of our finance committee members' points, we do budget revenues conservatively on the low end and we, we budget expenditures, everything that's, that's appropriated, we assumed it may go out the door. And traditionally, we have vacancies and budgets that go underutilized. So that's, that's where the large surpluses usually come from. So we also have a policy, council policy, that gives us some direction and, and some latitude about how we use the surplus. But largely, we are looking to, 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 to split the benefit of that surplus between generations. So- So, you know, long-term obligations might not benefit, you know, all residents if they only plan to be here a short time, whereas some of the infrastructure or neighborhood enhancements, it's something they may enjoy right away. This was our proposal of how we would use that 12.5 million dollars. It's not everything that's, that is allocated to the Harbor Master Plan, but how much of the surplus is being dedicated to the Harbor Master Plan? And this is, this is, again, with the pensions, this is the only amount, the portion from surplus that's being dedicated to pensions, or pay down the pension liability. Is everybody comfortable with the slide so far? Okay. So revenues, we always like to show the order of magnitude. We can see that property taxes make up the lion's share. It's our most important revenue sources. By keeping the community shiny and bright, keeping the harbor the way it should be, increases our residential property taxes. And our residential property taxes are, 83.5% of it is driven by residential properties. So a lot of it is coming from the residential real estate market, followed by sales tax at 34.7 million, transient occupancy tax at 22.8. Other taxes would be things like business license tax, cable franchise taxes, and then all, including the charter tax that we mentioned in the last session. And then all other sources represent about 20% of our revenue stream. So as I mentioned, we've enjoyed, you know, growth. I mean, even throughout the recession, you can see while the growth slowed to nearly zero, it never went negative. And I think that's something the committee should be proud of. And, but, the assessed valuation grows typically at a pretty good pace. And we have a long history of doing that. So you can see the median household sales and median price in 2018 is 2.5 million, and that's $500,000 more than the previous pre-recession high in 2007 of around $2 million. So we're already well above that with our median household or median price. So that doesn't always translate. When we take a look at property tax revenues in total, there are other things included in property tax, such as secure tax and penalties. We have money coming from residual tax proceeds coming from a defunct redevelopment agency. So when we look at year over year, we, our budget last year, our revised budget is projecting a 3.3% growth when considering all property tax revenues. And next year, we're projecting a 6.2, or sorry, a 4.2% increase. We know that the 2% inflation factor, the growth from Prop 13 will have an automatic 2% growth on all property. And then we've enjoyed high-volume sales in the residential market, as well as a lot of construction activity. So we believe even 4.2% is a conservative growth estimate for our number-one revenue source. Sales tax, you can see is, the growth is flattening. We have an aberration in 201617 due to a one-time payment. But we're, you know, we're still seeing growth, but it is slowing down. A lot of it's driven by kind of saturation of the auto industry. There was a lot of pent-up demand during the recession. And we sold a lot of cars in the last five to seven years. And now we're seeing a little bit of a slowdown in sales tax. And as you might know, we also lost our Audi dealership to Costa Mesa. That will be replaced by, yeah, probably more Porsches, maybe more Bentleys, but that, that area, we'll see some additional sales there as well. So, you know, we do realize that, you know, the department stores are being hit hard. We are, we do make up some of that through, if it's, if it's an online sale, we still receive a portion of our property taxes through the county pool. It's just not a direct allocation to the city, but it is a much smaller, smaller part. But something that we'll be keeping an eye on as Amazon probably takes over the world. Let's see. Okay. So transient occupancy tax. So 8% projection for next year sounds high, but it's coming off a year where there was a low inventory of rooms available during several renovations. And of course, we have the Lido House Hotel coming onboard. And then the remaining inventory of rooms will now be reavailable in 201819. So we think that is also a conservative estimate. And even for the current year, we're trending higher than we've budgeted. So we feel pretty good there. So in total, net-net, we're seeing a, just about a 3.1% from all of our revenue sources. And unless anyone has questions here, I'll stop and turn it over to Dave. No questions?
Just one quick one. So we discussed this a lot in finance committee, but it's worth mentioning to folks on the public. When we're talking about the proposed budget, and we're discussing revenue, and the question from time to time is, what happens if we come in short? The discussion we have often in the finance committee is, what is the first expense that you would cut? And I know we don't want to get too aggressively into the weeds on pension issues, but we do, we do send, would you mind just explaining the discretionary UAL? How that is sent on a monthly basis, and that if we ever come to a point where we are cutting it, it might be worth just saying, we just, we just cut the discretionary amount first. Does that make sense, Dan?
It does, and--
Oh, you come, is that coming later?
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if it's coming later.
I just want to, to your point, if we look at the additional discretionary payment, what Will is pointing out is that roughly 8.9 million in the general fund, we could curb, curb that back at any time and not send that money to purrs if we run into a shortfall.
And to explain that, it's that we don't send a check to Calpers for 8.9 million dollars. It's that we send it on a monthly basis--
Correct.
--so that, so that we're not, we're not trying to time the market.
Correct. We're, we dollar-cost average into equity. So we take our 8.8 million and divide that in 12 and send them a monthly check and target specific amortization schedules that are the worst of the bunch, those that are negatively amortizing.
And the reason we're doing the discretionary payment is because the goal is to pay it down within 20 years rather than the 30 that is being projected. And on top of that, we're actually assuming a lower rate of return than even what Calpers is demanding of us with, and because of that, and because of pretty decent investment returns. This was the first year where we're actually projecting a decrease in our total unfunded liability in the last five years.
You're stealing my thunder, but hopefully we can come back to that. But--
It's good news, though.
It is good news.
All right, all right. Thanks, Dan.
If we get there. Give me a second. Trying to get back to Dave. Okay. Take it away, Dave.
And again, good afternoon, council. A little different format this year on our capital improvement program, but I'm speaking for the public. It's our capital draft, capital improvement program. I've got a few projects I want to talk to today about, but we're happy to answer any questions on the whole document if you have those or at the next meeting.
Dave, before you go, I think the first one is streetlights, so--
Yes, I'm sorry.
And Mr. City Attorney, I know Mr. O'Neill, Dave's going to talk, I think, about the streetlight project up on the, in the hills, Spyglass. I want to make sure we're not putting Mr. O'Neill in the wrong position there.
No, we've confirmed that.
Okay.
Outside of his--
Okay.
Got it. Thanks.
So leading into that, and under, and Eric Hosh, and I know Mr. Muldoon had to leave, I'm just going to be talking about replacing the light bulbs in post tops today. But first project we want to kind of cover with you is that, over the years, we've been on a lot of work, and as you know, we own the majority of our streetlights in town. And we've been doing a lot of work on those over the years. We recently just completed all our Cobra lights. Those are the ones that usually are in the arterials, and we replaced the fixtures with LEDs on that. So we're now heading towards our, what we call our post-top lights. And there's a couple pictures here you can see. They're the globes you see downtown. They're the kind of little tin caps you see up in the Harborview Hills area. And one of the thoughts we were doing on replacement of these is, it's now become available that we can just replace the light bulb in these versus the whole fixture. So if the fixture's in good shape, we could just put a light bulb in and get the LED savings. We were thinking on doing $300,000 this year on LED replacements of the 1,796 post tops left. They're about $130 a bulb. That comes out to about $233,000 worth. That's where the 300 comes in. Then we're going to do another project down below, $70,000. We were actually going to start the design of the next series of East Plus projects, where we're changing our series circuits out to parallel circuits and upgrading the wiring, the lights, and the whole fixtures at the time. So as we were getting this project, we put in the budget, we had another request come in. And we've been working with one of our homeowners associations. And this is Spyglass Hills. The HOA from Spyglass Hills, and actually their president here, Bruce Horn, is with us today. Welcome to ask him any questions later. They've had some concerns about getting enough light on the roadway. They have an old set of lights up there. They were put in 1973. And the picture on the left is a picture of that light. And why I magnified that is, you can see, it's kind of a side-cast light. The glass is on the sides, the light goes out to the sides and gives a general illumination. And it's the old high-pressure sodium yellow-type lights out there that's currently in there. And we were going to replace those with LED bulbs. So one of the concerns was, I don't know if we could get enough light on the roadway with that replacement. If you look at the picture on the left, this is a project we did back in 2009. This is Harborview Hills. They had the similar type of fixtures on top, but we had to replace them with an LED fixture that had a much more directional pattern down below. At the time, you couldn't just do bulb replacements on these. And this really illuminated that neighborhood. And I know Bruce and some of his colleagues up in Spyglass have been in here, and they liked the look of this, and that's what brought this conversation on. So our utilities department is actually working right now. They've gone up and they've installed some LED bulbs in some of the fixtures. And we're actually going to get some new fixtures and install those, too. And we're going to work with the HOA to see what's the best solution to their concern about not getting enough light on the road. And also, they have a little concern with bleeding light around. And again, the old fixtures tend to do that. They have a horizontal spread to them, too. So what we're looking for in this particular project is having staff's discretion to, should the HOA want to go with a new fixture that gives a better span on the roadway, that we go ahead and do a project that would just replace the fixtures on that? If not, and they could do it just living with the light bulbs, then we'd go ahead and relamp the rest of the light bulbs for about 300,000, or the 233 that I showed before.
Excuse me, Dave. Will O'Neill has mayor protein question?
Yep. Just real quick. One of the, I'll also note that one of the reasons that the HOA is requesting this is because there's a safety issue. We'd seen a spike in crime up in the Spyglass Hill area. And part of the reason was because, from what I understand, folks were actually coming in through kind of the back hills area, and then would hang out in the street areas. And it's hard to see when we have that situation arising up there. Fortunately, our police department's done a great job, and the crime has been reduced. But this would be a pretty enormous difference. And actually, if you go up in the area right now, especially in the main areas, you'll see the LED lighting is significantly different. If you haven't been up there in a couple of years, you'll notice it's significantly different. And so being able to actually see the streets, there's also a safety component to this in addition to the fact that it would certainly look better.
Thank you. And just on this particular item, I was going to ask for your kind of guidance at the end, but because Mr. Muldoon has a conflict with this, I was going to just say, if it's okay with council, if the staff works with the HOA and we determine how best to go about to spend that 300,000, whether we relamp or refixture, depending on what the HOA comes out with, that's kind of the kind of guidance we're looking from, the council today.
Assuming that what you're saying is, assuming that if it's within the range of what you're showing right now versus, I mean, if it was something in a different order of magnitude, certainly we'd probably want you to come back. But I mean, I, I'm remarkably comfortable, I'm comfortable with this. Spyglass is, Spyglass Hill is not in an area that we see very often asking for infrastructure improvements. And so this one honestly is, I think it's an easy one. So I would, I would support it.
So any other on that? Okay. I'm going to go ask Mr. Muldoon to come back in, and we'll go to the next one.
Just as Mr. Muldoon's coming back in, what we'll probably do is I'll keep kind of a running little list of issues that we'd like your opinions on. And then after public comment, I'll ask you those questions again, just so we make sure we have direction and we have some record.
So this is another project that's developing out of a community request. This is Newport Island Park. And we've recently met with HOA out there. We've been talking for a while on this park, and it's, it's an older park. It needs some love and attention. And the HOAs come to us and asked if we could put some additional rehabilitation money in this park. And it's currently not in our budget. We just met recently, and they're talking about replacing. They have a community shed out there, which is, we can work with that. They were going to purchase a new shed, and we'd relocate it to a different area of the park. They keep their HOA supplies and other things on that. Some of the raised planners are various rock planners that were originally built, and they're missing rock or broken up and need some love and attention on that. So some additional, maybe new masonry work, maybe new facades going in there. Some new planning and irrigation. Some of the landscaping's pretty worn down. Some of the irrigation is, needs, it's in great shape. Our MOD folks keep it up, but it, we could use some areas where it's trampled and things like that to be taken care of, maybe some boundary walls to keep people from trampling. They'd like to take the playground out, and they'd like to replace the sand with a rubberized surface. We might, we'd work with our recreational folks, maybe make a smaller footprint playground with all rubberized surface and no sand. And then the swing set and play equipment in there is due to be replaced. So those are just some of the things we initially looked at. We haven't completely scoped the project out yet, but we think this is something we'd like to move forward with. Now, the way I'd finance this, I was going to propose to the council. I put some numbers there. I'm not sure where it's going to be, 80 to maybe 150,000. We probably need a little landscape architect just to come up with a quick plan, bid it out, and do a construction project. Currently in your budget, we've had for several years, we had a proposed project at Veterans Park. And this project stemmed out of working with the American Legion several years ago. They were talking about redoing their clubhouse. They wanted to redo their parking lot and wanted to work with the city maybe to renegotiate their lease boundaries. If you, if you're familiar with the Legion, it's got a chain-link fence along the alley by Marina Park. And our new walkway goes down to their yacht club and basically stops there. And our goal would be to get that walkway to extend down to 15th Street, maybe decorate or put a little better fencing in there, do some parking improvements down by the park. And that was the goal of this $200,000 project that's in your budget now. What I propose, if it's okay, is moving this $200,000 just into what we call our Landscape Enhancement Program. We put several hundred thousand dollars in that we've been working with MOD and our rec folks in some of our areas that need a little more than our maintenance contracts address. Sunset Ridge Park, some of our medians need a little, little extra boost, some of our park signs. So move this fund into there, and then we go ahead and do this Newport Island Park out of that project. And I'm going to probably catch, we can get questions in the end, or we can do them as you go.
Yeah. Diane?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Dave, and thank you for including the Newport Island. This is, it's an improvement on a park that I don't think has been addressed since like 1974 or '64. Others may correct me, but it's been a long time. And when I was first elected, this was one of the first request items from this homeowners association. So it's, and that would longstanding-- So, it's, and that went longstanding prior to my election. So, this is a long time in wanting and coming, and I certainly appreciate you figuring out a way that maybe we could do some of this in year one. I appreciate that. And maybe in public comment, we'll hear from some of the residents supporting that as I do. Thank you.
And just to clarify, this would be a partial rehab. We wouldn't be taking the field out, probably not taking the sports court out, because there have been components that have been rebuilt over the years. We kind of fill in the gaps on that. We did some beach work recently there, too, so.
Councilman Muldoon.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a chance to head down to this park with Mr. Miller, who's in the audience today. It's kind of a unique park because surrounded by a lot of homes, it's a lot of use, where there's nowhere else to walk. They're surrounded by water, as you'd imagine islands are. And this is, I think, a really good appropriation of funds, given the use of the park, its location, and how long it's been neglected for. It's not really been, as you state, so neglected that it's not safe, but it certainly has time, I think, for a refresher. Thank you.
Mayor Protim O'Neill.
Yeah, I mean, I know our Parks Department motto is parks make life better. And so, the best thing, one of the other nice benefits of something like this is that we just had slides discussing property values going up. Anytime you rehab a park, it increases the property values around it. So, this is, yeah, this is probably another one of those no brainers.
And I would mention, we wouldn't be looking for new money. This is part of the $5 million from prior years that we're putting into our infrastructure. And as Mr. Muldoon mentioned, the HOA president, Mr. Jim Miller's here, too, if you have any questions for him today. So, our next project, we talked a little bit about when we first went into the early look of the budget, and I wanted to kind of bring this one back. And Councilman Muldoon had some questions on this project, so I wanted to go a little more in depth on the Lower Sunset View Park project, so we can understand a little better and maybe get some council guidance. So, we've had this project around for a couple of years now, particularly ever since Sunset Ridge Park was approved, and then our original parking and access, if you recall, was going to be on the Banning Ranch side. With the Banning Ranch approval lately, they redid it and they removed all their entitlements, and I'm not sure where that project's going to go. We no longer have any kind of guaranteed parking or access to this park. So, staff's been looking at another alternative, and you've probably seen this picture before, it's out of our budget before, and we kind of came up with maybe adding a parking structure and maybe a rec component to Lower Sunset View Park, and then connect it with some bridges. And we're looking more at this, and we have some information on that as the next slideshow. But the big thing we need to do here is we need to provide the necessary parking for Sunset View Park. It's not adequately parked now, and the sports teams can't fully utilize the park along with the public. Laura Detwiler is here tonight. She could speak to you if you have any questions on the need of that. But we need about 161 spaces to make this park work. The other thing is we want to improve the pedestrian cycle and circulation safety through the intersection. This is a very highly intense intersection. It gets a lot of traffic, both from a pedestrian side, a cycle, and a vehicle side. We want to address current and future intersection deficiencies. We have projected deficiencies here. We're starting to see those. Our general plan, as you know, has a minimum level of service D. We're already at that on this intersection, and there's some trends that are going to kind of change things. So, that's really the goal of what we're trying to address, the principles of the park, to address those features. Just some background facts. I mentioned the parking for the park. When Sunset Ridge Park was approved, and the EIR and all the analysis said it needed 161 stalls, and again, Banning Ranch is not being moved forward, so we have to take care of that somewhere. The intersection operation, as I mentioned, is currently LOSD. Our forecast in 2006 in our circulation element said this is going to reach LOSF by 2020. We're already kind of heading that way, and there's some other things that are pointing it to even get there quicker. I put some volumes on here just to give you a sense of what kind of traffic goes through there, and you've got 48,000 cars going through Coast Highway every day, 21,000 going on the north-south route from Balboa to Superior every day, 600 pedestrian crossings at this intersection, 450 across Coast Highway. That's a big number. It doesn't sound like one. If you think about pedestrians and you think about how many, often you see people cross the street intersection, this is a big number. It's a big intersection, and it has it, particularly on the Coast Highway side. And then you've got 90 cyclists that run through there, and that's another big number, probably trending to grow, because as you know, Coast Highway has designated the state coastal bike route up and down the state. So, we see more and more folks traveling up and down Coast Highway. A future trend that we're going to see, and I'll point this out for the public because they may not be aware, when you push that pedestrian button on our signals, it starts a timer, and by law, we have to give people so much time to walk across the street. The current cross time is 46 seconds. The new ADA codes and standards coming out is going to raise that to 53 seconds. That's against the hard movement of the intersection, the one we really want to make sure, the Coast Highway movement, and it's going against that. So, one of the thoughts is take those folks out of the intersection and put them on a pedestrian crossing. And by doing that, you gain 20 to 40 seconds back in that cycle, that critical cycle, which adds a lot of time. We can move a lot of cars through the intersection. It goes back to that LOS. Our LOS starts changing. We start increasing the efficiency of the intersection. That's one trend that I know of. Couple of the trends that we don't have this in here yet, we will have to address in our circulation element, is that, one, we probably won't see Bluff Road, at least in the near future. That was the road that went from Coast Highway up to 19th Street in the Banning Ranch proposal. That would have taken a lot of traffic off heading to the freeway. All that traffic is going through, and will, any projected growth will come through this intersection. The other thing that happened several years ago, that they took out what they call the 19th Street Bridge that connected Costa Mesa to Huntington Beach. That traffic, again, would have been going, taken away from this arterial and going up to 19th Street. Now, will, does go through this intersection and will continue to grow in this intersection. And lastly, and we really don't know the effect of this, as you know, the state implemented the auxiliary units that we're going to be putting in our density. I'm not sure how much we're going to have, how much Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa is going to get out of that, but that will generate some level of traffic, too. It's currently not in our circulation element, and will impact this already impacted intersection. All those things are things we're trying to plan for. Taking the pedestrians out increases the efficiency of the intersection, and it also increases the safety of the intersection with pedestrians. So, going forward on this project, one of our thoughts was we need to determine whether, how do we park these cars? There's two methods of doing it. We could put a surface lot on there. The original picture I showed you had what we would have, probably a parking structure. We thought about doing a parking structure on there. That's the only way it can get 161 cars, be two level. If we don't want to go the expense of a parking structure, we could probably put a surface lot on there. We could probably get 100, 120, and again, that might be enough with Laura and her crews to work with scheduling and work the park to be more efficient. Probably costs less, is about $2 million less to do a surface lot than a parking structure. So, that's a decision I'm going to be looking for maybe a little guidance on. We need to move forward with the design and approval of the concept, and we need to make the concept, we have to kind of figure out the whole park and bridges as one before we start designing the actual structures. And the reason being is whenever you build a bridge, you've got abutments and landings and things like that, and they're fixed points and locations. We kind of not, we need to know how that's going to fit together, how it's going to look, and with the council and the community approve that. From there, we can go into the design of the park. We can actually parcel it out. We can do, what we're proposing here, probably two phases. And the reason why I'm going to propose two phases is, as we told you just recently, OCTA gave us a $2.3 million grant to build the Superior Bridge. It's about a $2.7 million project. That's got a short fuse on it. We've got to get moving on that. I don't even know if we can make it, to tell you the honest truth. I've already inquired with OCTA, and again, a time extension, it's federal money, but we do need to start moving that forward. So, we'd probably ask to build that first, and then the second phase would be working with the Coast Highway Bridge. It's a little longer lead. We haven't got the funding completely figured out. We need to work with the state, Caltrans. So, I expect a longer process there. And then there's the parking lot itself. I'd like to build that with the first phase. My design staff has me kind of baffled in how I'd transition that in, because you've got an interim where you have to keep some crosswalks open, some closed. How do we get people up and down the bridges without building an elevator? So, we need to work out the details of it. So, right now, I'm thinking, well, maybe we build it in the second phase, but it'd be nice if we could build it in the first phase. Just some background on that part. And here you'll see, again, I'm kind of looking at how we're going to do this. Maybe we put in that first phase bridge, we figure out the transition there, and then if we get the funding secured on the second, the permits, we go ahead and build the second bridge. And that big green circle is kind of what we're thinking, it's maybe for a surface lot. We could carve maybe into the hill a little bit, get a little more use out of the area that's now just vacant dirt, and fill in the other area and balance the site out. So, it's kind of the thoughts on this park. And it's just some numbers of your.
Excuse me, Dave. Councilman Muldoon.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Webb, for giving us a detailed report and follow up. I appreciate it. Would you be removing the current crosswalk painted on the street right now if one of these bridges get put in?
Yes, we would. Once the bridges are in, we'd take both crosswalks out. The only one left would be on the south side on Coast Highway.
So, we can assume that bicyclists and motor vehicle trips will stay about the same, but pedestrian crossing will essentially not be an option unless they're breaking the law? They'll take the bridge, and it'll ease up traffic in the area?
Yes, actually, we'd want the recreational bikers, and they'd probably use it, be designed for them to use the bridge, too. You just have the road bikes that want to stay on the Coast Highway.
Excellent. Personally, I think that this is a nice area with pristine views, and I would assume support the larger surface lots and save the cities some money and not have a parking structure. Now, as it were to go, if you look at the green zone you've outlined, it stays sort of below the plane. It looks nice. I just want to express that, but I think you're doing a great job. I think you have to run full speed for the bridge, as you said, to retain these funds from the states, and I like what you're doing for the sake of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Councilman Muldoon's inclination toward the service parking lot and saving the $2 million and try to, do you think we could hit that 162 or 1 number with that?
I don't know. We haven't done the engineering on it, but it's going to be tight. My preliminary estimates is about 100, maybe 120. The other thing, and Ms. Dixon brought this up, and it's actually a good proposal, because it's kind of limited to get in here if you look at this picture. We thought about if we could take that access road and punch it down to, and I'll point to it here, here's the cogeneration from Hoag, and maybe there's a way to create a connection here if we could work with Hoag and maybe get to the signal down the road. It would be great circulation for them and us, because it's really a right in, right out only to this park. We'd have to do some legwork and design for that.
Right. Well, this is, you know, we've got so much invested in the Sunset View Park, and your staff has done a great job of, you know, kind of figuring this out. And I think getting pedestrians away from this, which is one of the most aggressive intersections in our town, is really a win for drivers and for pedestrians. And finally, I think there have been some studies done, I think, for our neighbors up on the bluff above about the height of the bridge and the fact that it's way below the ocean view. So, my experience has been people are concerned with that. From what I've seen from the drawing so far, I know that consideration was taken, and we should not have any issue there.
Yeah, we would actually make a point to show that in any kind of concept we'd bring back to council. That is an important point. We've done some preliminary work, and you only basically look down at the highway and a couple of houses. You don't even get close to looking at the water view. I would mention one thing when we're looking at this picture. That Coast Highway Bridge has always been a bit of a challenge for us to land it on the ocean side, and the concept we've come up with, we've got a scale concept we're working on, is we're going to push the highway to the north a little bit, and the good news is we own all the land on the north side. We need to create a landing zone. There's already a large bike lane shoulder there. We can add a little bit more room on that and make a basically a switchback ramp, and we wouldn't have to have any elevators on this project, which is one of my goals, because it's a maintenance issue, sometimes it's a safety issue, and it's a cost issue. And I think we could do it all just by gravity and vertical ramps.
Yeah. The synergy between the park and the bridges and the bicycle access, but it turns into something much greater than the sum of its parts, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What have we done as far as the parking at Sunset Ridge Park, as far as pursuing an alternative there? You know, originally, we had it as part of our plan that the roadway that would eventually have been the entrance to the south side of Banning, and then we took a driveway off of that, and because of the concern that we were preapproving Banning in some form or fashion, we withdrew that aspect of our coastal commission request. And so, we just dropped it in anticipation that something would happen with Banning, we'd be able to put a driveway in and come back. What about the third alternative now of coming in with just a driveway from PCH up to that lot on the west side of Sunset Ridge Park? It would be done, assuming Banning never got done, although I guess we would lay it out in a way that if Banning did come, we wouldn't be building new right of way or trampling on new sensitive habitat. But I think, I don't think the coastal commission's ever addressed that aspect of it. I mean, it could be a right in, right out only and not even put a signal there, and at one point, we were talking about putting a signal. And I think our parking lot layout, if I remember right, had somewhere around 75 to 100 spaces over there on the west side of Sunset Ridge?
Yes.
I mean, I would be in favor of that rather than going to the cost of a parking structure. I mean, I like your concepts of the ramps. I understand how it works with the pedestrians and the bicyclists and your great separations, and, you know, you've got some significant rates there that I think you can really make them very functional without having to do elevators, so I appreciate your concern in working towards that design goal. But I'd like to include in this concept reevaluating that west side parking lot of Sunset Ridge Park.
And just maybe some comments on that for some background. One, if we built parking here, it'd never be not utilized, because this park is also used for beach parking, overflow, and other things. So, if we were able to get more parking on the other side, you'd probably get a bonus there. To what Mr. Piattar's talking about, I think there was a willingness, in fact, our first approval, I remember Mr. Kiff and I were there, that they actually offered us a road in and just a parking lot, but the landowner, it's not acceptable that because it basically blocks his development out. We'd probably have to go back and touch that conversation. I'm sure they'd be concerned again. I'm not sure where the project is or if we're moving forward, but it could be a possible solution, at least maybe in the long term.
And I agree, as much parking as you can get over on the Superior side as well as the west side would be what I think you'd want to go for, but it would avoid us having to do a structure, at least for Sunset Ridge Park purposes. I mean, we may decide we want it for another reason, to provide additional parking for the peninsula, but for the Sunset Ridge Park.
If I could suggest, then we would probably move forward to this. We would surely watch that. I don't know if I'd want to try to get it conditioned in part of this, because it brings a whole nother animal in. You've got the coastal commission, someone else's property, and it might cause delay in what we're doing here.
Well, I would expect that it'd be two separate tracks, but I would like to see it from a budget standpoint, that we'd go after both.
Okay.
And I'm presuming coastal commission approval wouldn't happen overnight, so it may be that the construction portion's well into the next fiscal year.
Okay. So, and I, real quick on the numbers here, if you wanted to look at those, there's just, and how we're going to fund it. The first project phase is already funded right now with park funds and grant funds. The first project phase is already funded right now with park funds and grant funds. The second fund, we will start working on... Sorry about my numbers, all got mixed up on the formatting.
Excuse me, Dave.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon, would you like to comment?
Well, actually, you can go back to those numbers. So I just wanted to clarify, are you putting in the parking structure $3.5 million? So would any of that, just considering if we were to go with that, to gain that additional parking, would any of, how much, would that also be included with special grant funding, OCTA grant funding or in-lu parking funds? Would that cover the parking structure?
We don't have the parking structure funded right now. We could look for that, but it would probably be a reach to get grant funds for a parking structure unless we had some joint use where OCTA would be parking rights, something they'd get some benefit out of it. These numbers here, as you look at Phase 1, the 2.9 million is basically construction of the bridge and the accessories. We have to do some reramping at Sunset Ridge Park, and then down below, Phase 2 has 5.7 million in it. That would be for a surface lot. If we were able to do the surface lot with Phase 1, you'd move about $2 million from Phase 2 to Phase 1 up. To build the parking structure, that very bottom line basically says, in addition to the 10.3 million we show here, you need to add another $3.5 million to handle the cost of a parking structure.
Okay, so that's a lot of money. I think just if you've got the, identified the source of funds to begin to commence, if we all agree to move forward, I think the surface parking lot's probably the most expedient way to go. If you'd go back to the green oval, if at some point in the future, if we needed to expand parking or build a parking structure, I mean, you mentioned the beach parking, obviously that's the high demand seasonally. We, some future council could probably build a parking structure. That's always land that could be built, a parking structure could be built on, correct?
I'm pretty sure.
I also want to just say, from the ocean side or beach side of West Newport, Resident Association, West Newport Beach, West Newport Beach Association residents have been longtime supporters of additional parking and additional pedestrian, both pedestrian bridges for the obvious reasons that you've stated, and would be an enhancement to the use of Sunset Ridge Park. I think you mentioned in one of our previous discussions that the usage numbers for the park is really dependent upon the availability of parking, and parking is difficult and crossing, pedestrian crossing, so I think this would really be a benefit to the additional usage, increased usage of the park because parking will be made possible. So I think it's a fantastic plan. The residents on, in my side of the Coast Highway, think it would be a great idea, and again, to echo, actually, it was one of the residents' ideas to consider putting an access off Coast Highway so residents or visitors, users of the parking lot do not have to go all the way up Superior and down Hospital Road and down Newport Boulevard. So if you could figure that one out, that would be fantastic. So thank you. Good job.
So without any questions, I'll go to the next one here. So there is another proposal in the budget that you may have not seen yet. This has to do with a proposal coming forward from the Friends of Library and our library department. They'd like to explore developing a concept for a lecture hall in the central library area. The initial thoughts are maybe it's a 300-person seat lecture hall auditorium. The concept, they'd like to be funded in this year's budget. The proposal that's kind of on the table right now is that maybe $50,000 from the city, or $20,000 from the Friends of Library. It's about a $70,000 project, Library Foundation, I'm sorry, I have to say Friends of Library. The foundation's planning on putting the money forward here. The library has done a lot of research on this and the foundation, and what they're actually going to also request, they'd like to work with the original architect. Kathy Simons was the architect of the original library. She's now working with Perkins &amp; Will. So we'd be looking at running into a sole-source contract, which is, again, we select our architects and engineers on qualifications-based, so if they're the most qualified, this is okay. I just want to put that to your attention, that they feel that would be a good symmetry, having her. She did so much work on the original building and how to tie it in and everything. And then lastly, they'd like to start the design right away, as in this month. So that's kind of what, the picture here shows maybe some possible locations. We haven't really figured that out yet, but there are some areas on the library parking lot, maybe we could find a way, maybe even work with the Irvine Company in the south where they can be moved partly into their area, so just some thoughts on that. And with that, I'm going to kind of turn it back to you guys for your thoughts.
I don't see any up here. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Thoughts specifically on the library?
Yes, this has to do with the library. By the way, the Library Foundation, Jill Tucker's with us here. Tim Heatherman, our library director, for any questions they have on the project.
I don't mean to interject again, but it may be good to get the public comment, and then I have a list of like three things I just want more council feedback on, based on what Dave has presented.
On the library?
Sorry. On everything Dave has presented, I'd like to kind of get some guidance as to whether or not you want us to continue with that and keep it in the budget or modify it. I think I have some of that sense, but it'd be best if that was after public comments. I imagine Jim wants to speak and Jill and others.
Oh, all right.
Let me ask you one more question. I know we've been presenting a long time. You could take public comment at this point. Carol is going to be up next to talk about the two organizations, so why don't you let me know what you'd prefer? If you'd prefer that staff just keeps plowing through things, or if you want to take a public comment break?
I think we should take a public comment.
Okay.
While it's fresh in your minds. So, having said that, are there any speakers that would like to come up and comment?
I'm not technically giving public comments. I'm actually Jill Johnson Tucker, and I chair the Board of Library Trustees, and I'd like to give you a little background on that presentation, to tell you how we ended up, where we did, and what we're asking for. I've been on the Board of Library Trustees for seven years. In my time on the library board, one item has been under discussion and an evaluation at our board meetings, at the meetings of the foundation, and at the meetings of the Witty Lecture Series Subcommittee, and that's the lecture hall. We've got a vibrant calendar of programs and lectures at the library. The Witty Lecture Series invites the most prominent speakers. With David Frum and Masha Gessen amongst this year's speakers. Library Live also has a vibrant and constantly expanding lecture series with last year's Pulitzer Prize-winning author Colson Whitehead recently appearing. And we have other well-attended series like Medicine in Your Backyard, It's Your Money, Sunday Music House, and a whole host of other events that take place at the library. However, these events are always held in the Friends Room, which is a flat-floored, multipurpose-type room, which serves a lot of needs but isn't ideal for a lecture which requires better sightlines. Audience members not at the front during the lecture have limited visibility, even though the speakers are on an elevated podium. Despite the limitations, lectures get great turnouts and have loyal followings, but many of our peer libraries have lecture halls for their presentations. The library board believes a lecture hall would be befitting to the quality of programs presented and much more comfortable for our residents. Over the past few years, the Board of Trustees has quietly examined whether a lecture hall would be suitable for our space. Two years ago, the city helped us conduct a feasibility study to see if there was a spot in the parking lot to accommodate a building. We've conducted informal studies to determine when the parking lot is most in demand, and we've studied the use of the city hall parking structure. We reached a point this past fall where we felt we should push forward and move the lecture hall to the forefront of our agenda. Lizanne Witty from the Witty Lecture Series and a part of the original group who raised funds for our existing library 20-some years ago, recommended that we reach out to the original architect of the library, Kathy Simon, who's now with Perkins &amp; Will. She came to the library last fall along with two others from Perkins &amp; Will and met with several of us from the Board of Trustees and the foundation. We've since taken a day trip to San Francisco and to Los Angeles to see some of the Perkins &amp; Will lecture halls and auditoriums. We would like them to proceed with conceptual plans, and they proposed a contract in two parts. The first for the conceptual plans is for $40,000. After that step, we hope to evaluate whether there's a design and location that we believe works, and if so, present our ideas at that point to council and to seek approval to move on to the second phases of the contract. As far as funding goes, there's a small group of us on this informal committee, made up of members from the board and the library support groups. This is the group that met with Perkins &amp; Will at the library and went on the trips. Many of the committee members have extensive experience with capital campaigns and fundraising. We believe this is the type of project that will appeal to our generous donor base in the community, and because of the excessive, the existing program already in place...
Please go on.
I have one more sentence, or I can sit. We believe this project lends itself to public-private funding, but first, we need to get the conceptual part of our vision on paper and hope the council supports that vision and authorizes our initial conceptual phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on material that we've already gone over?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Dorothy Larson. I chair the Library Foundation. So if you're familiar with the structure, we have the trustees, which is appointed the library, the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation, which is volunteer group that raises money for the library enhancements. And I just want to let you all know that our board is fully in support of this proposal, and we have looked at, we've met with Perkins &amp; Will, we've looked at what we have so far. We've worked very hard to try to find an optimal solution, which we believe can be offered by Perkins &amp; Will because they've looked at the site, they know the factors that are involved in this city, and we believe that this lecture hall auditorium would be perfect for this community and for the kinds of programs that we do now and would like to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Two things I would, I'm Jim Miller, and I'm president of Newport Island and on the West Newport Board for 20 years and been on city commissions. And first of all, I want to thank City Council and your staff. This is Exhibit A, how a city should run its business. It's wonderful. As an attorney, we learned at first, when a judge is on your side, sit down and shut up. So I don't have much to say, except I just want to compliment city staff, and I've been involved with Dave Kiff and up and down the coast, trying to get Sunset Ridge started. Down in San Diego, we thought we lost the vote, the swing vote, but we got it through. We did it because all of the peninsula wants these two bridges up there, all right? Make sure, and that's council policy, to maximize these parks used by the maximum number of residents. And so we appreciate Dave's direction he's given and fully support everything that's been said today, and what a guy you've got over here. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for what you do. Are there any other speakers?
Mayor Tuffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. The City of Newport Beach has many policies that are very unclear. One of them is how City Council divides its decision-making between study sessions and its regular meetings in the evening. One might naively think that a study session was for learning about something and not making decisions. There seems to be a lot of decision-making going on this afternoon with a lot of the public not being able to be here. I don't know how many years that's been going on. It has been for a number of years. That's the first comment I wanted to make. Second is, I'm not totally sure how the presentation about the capital improvement program is being divided between today and the Part 2 of this that you're going to be hearing in two weeks, but in his presentation, Director Webb mentioned that the circulation element of our general plan is a bit out of date, and I wanted to point out, in the capital improvement program that you discussed and approved a year ago, there was $1 million budgeted for updating the general plan this year. And using the interactive budget tool that we learned about earlier in the presentation today, one can go back and see that that $1 million in the present budget that we have, nothing has been spent from that, as you know, but somehow the fund has been raided, even though usually something that's budgeted in the capital improvement program moves over to the next year. And according to our interactive portal, that is now down to $439,000 left for updating the circulation element and the rest of the general plan. But as best I can tell, the capital improvement program you're reviewing today has $0 in it, so I am wondering if that's the city, I'm wondering what happened to the $1 million and why the $439,000 that's left of that budgeted amount is not being carried over, and whether it's the intent to have anything in the budget for working on the general plan between July 1st and June 30th of next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Anything done? Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up on a couple of things. I guess it was the library I was going to follow up on when we broke for the public comment. I just want to indicate my support. I've enjoyed learning more about this proposed lecture hall for the last couple of years, working with members of the Library Foundation, and they've been doing, in my opinion, excellent due diligence and comparison studies with other lecture halls in other communities. And as we saw in the drawing here, the site is available on public land in the parking lot, and through the excellent historical record of the fundraising capability of the members of the Library Foundation and the community at large, I think this will be a well-received investment. So I'll just voice my support for adding it into the capital improvement program if others agree with me, and I wholeheartedly endorse it and thank the Library Foundation for its excellent leadership to get to this point. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kiff, what was, what's the arrangement with the library board in regards to the lecture hall? Is there a commitment that the council's already made as far as funding?
No, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring something to you, just to get some guidance.
And why, who came up with the 50/20 split on the $70,000 pre? I take it this is just a schematic design or an idea phase?
That's right.
In order for them to be able to go out and raise money?
We talked at a staff level about it, and it is within my authority to approve it, but I didn't feel comfortable doing that, given that it's a potentially significant project for the community, so I did want to ask you more about that. But that's a staff-level discussion with Ms. Tucker and the representatives from the library board.
So it was the library board that suggested the 20/50 split?
You guys can help remember it, remind me of the details, I don't know if Carol or Tim or Ms. Tucker knows.
Perkins &amp; Will initially came forth with a one-payment contract, which was, I think, $68,000, and I don't think I'd presented it to you guys as yet. I'd said, "That's too much," and so they came up with what they thought was a way that they could split it up and make it make sense in their heads to really pull back on that fee. So it was Perkins &amp; Will that proposed the $40,000, and then the second phase would be 28, if we like the first set of conceptual plans they come up with, and if we don't, we wouldn't move forward. We'd come to you for approval. That was our discussion with Perkins &amp; Will.
So it's a $70,000 contract, but the contract's in two phases, obviously.
In two phases, and there's no obligation to complete the second part of the contract.
As far as the split between the city and the library board being 20 and 50,000?
No. The library board is funded through you, so we do not have that kind of funding in the budget. The foundation could possibly come forward with that money, other than they have not been doing any of that fundraising to date. We're hoping for conceptual plans before we put together a capital campaign group to do fundraising. They've, the fundraising that they have done to date has all been for the express purposes of lectures or just general funds for improvement of the existing library, so they don't have that funding either.
So staff's recommending that the foundation pay 20 and the city pay 50, but your foundation hasn't even approved that?
I'm on the Board of Trustees. I don't know if the foundation has approved that. We're, I think we're seeking the $40,000 to more for...
It sounds like the thought is that the city would start with the initial money, the 40, the Phase 1, and then if the further refinement looks like it's got some legs, we'd ask the foundation for that support, and then that together would be developed into a fundraising campaign by the foundation.
Got it. Remind me, where is the proposed location?
On the screen, in front of you and behind you. I know Mr. Piattar wishes there was something over here, and this is a good chance for why it should be there, but those gray circles, there's some options. I think if, I don't want to speak out of turn, that one to the far left is the most likely one.
Closest to the building, or the...
Yeah, the one that's closest to the existing Friends Room seems to be the best one for us. One or the other of those two.
So the one at 12 o'clock, not 10 o'clock?
Well, those two are both really good. And that's just based on the feasibility study from two years ago, but we've talked about the interplay between some of what goes on inside the library and having people that are in the library move forward into whatever's going on in the lecture hall and needing to have that flow work well, and also the idea that potentially that bio-swell could perhaps take some of the, a little bit of the bulk of the building so that you wouldn't use as much of the parking lot. You could perhaps push the building a little forward. The way this building sits a little bit more forward towards avocado, you could perhaps do that. The library itself has a pretty big setback, and if you put the lecture hall a little more forward, you might be able to capture, use less of the parking lot. So that's what we think, but we have not, we like, we need the experts to weigh in, hence Perkins &amp; Will.
And are you anticipating that we would need a parking structure to offset the lost parking?
No, we're not. We're hoping that there won't be much lost parking, and the use, the major uses of the lecture hall that go on at times of the day that don't have heavy usage in the library, so we think that we're going to be able to pretty much have a zero sum.
Similarly, our hope was that the people would use the parking structure too, because the city hall activities would be lower at nights and weekends during lecture hall operation.
You'd use the park, you'd use the lecture hall in a way that didn't create increased demand, and then you still have the parking that you're going to displace, that you're just going to basically lose, which we already had a problem with, and that's why we provided, what, an extra 100 spaces in the city hall structure for?
That's correct.
So you'd be eating up into that 100 spaces?
Yeah, which has not been full. I mean, it's full on very few days when there's a lot of busyness here in the community room, but generally, while you have to walk a little further, you can always find a parking space in the structure.
And the bio-swell is an actual working MPDES requirement, so that'd have to be relocated somehow, somewhat.
Well, the thought would be you peer out over it.
And keep it active underneath.
Yeah.
All right, well, that answers my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Herdman.
Chair Tucker, just a quick question is, are you envisioning the use of this facility just for lectures, or might it be for performing arts activities as well?
Well, we actually currently have a few performing arts things that the library offers. We have Sunday Music House. We've got, sometimes the ballet comes through. I'm not envisioning it being large enough to have a backstage area, so it wouldn't be an auditorium in the sense that you have changing rooms and, well, you probably have a green room, but you wouldn't have full-on sets changing out and that kind of thing. And also, the question is how, if we were to do a summer theater program, how much would that put too much demand on the parking? So I think we'd have to limit it a little bit, but yeah, absolutely, we would have some programming like that.
All right, thank you. And then just one other comment. My understanding of study sessions are for, in large part, are for the staff to receive direction from the council. Am I correct, Mr. Kiff?
Yeah, let me try and answer your question, Mr. Herdman, as well as Mr. Mosher, because I think... I think it -- they do blend together. But I do want to assure you and Mr. Moser, what we do is we take your direction, and then we bring a formal action back to you.
Correct.
So we're not bringing something crazy out of the blue. We're bringing something that you've at least thought about and given us some direction on.
But it is our opportunity as a body, all of us up here at one time, to give input to the staff.
It is.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Proton O'Neil.
Just one quick note. I think that we're probably looking at something very similar to the junior guards building, where we'll need to have an idea of the cost and where it goes out. And the only way to get there is probably is going through this process. I would just -- I really hope we don't lose very much parking. The library is used so heavily by parents with young families and seniors. And the -- as someone who still has a stroller in the backseat of the car, I'll just tell you, it is a pain in the neck to come through the -- to get up into the parking structure and then get down to the public library. And that star reading room is so used, so well-used. So I just -- I would really hope we don't lose very much -- I would hope we just don't lose very much parking in this design. So whatever the design that gets us there would be preferable.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Thank you. Yeah, I went to my first Witty lecture a week or two ago. It was absolutely fabulous. And my wife and I got down there sort of late, so we got in the back. And I experienced the -- it would have been nice to have been in a nice 300-seat lecture hall, that's for sure. And it's, you know, it's a wonderful idea, and I'm totally supportive. And I see this very analogous to the lifeguard center. It's a -- it's not a must-have like a fire station, and it's more of a great-to-have if we could afford it. So I think we need to look at it in total context of everything that's in the budget. I believe both the lifeguard headquarters and this lecture hall represent an opportunity for residents to really step forward and help support it and be sort of in a partnership mode with the city. You know, and my feeling is that a sort of a 50-50 matching dollar from the city for dollars from the community would be -- I'd really like to see that happen on this sort of thing. Or an outpouring of residents that just make it really, really clear that this is where they want to see money spent. And I suppose that would work, too. You know, we're sometimes, at least for me, if sort of in a vacuum, you know, we hear from the proponents who are obviously very for it, and they should be. They're both wonderful projects. But it'd be great to hear more from the residents of the town that would benefit from these things. They're both very worthy, so they shouldn't remain silent. And they're just very compelling, very compelling each of them in terms of fundraising goals. So I would just like to see that, a more sort of an aggressive approach toward the -- not undershooting the dollars and the asks to people in this community to support it. Because I believe the proper campaign, I do believe that we could get both of these funded at a 50% level. But then I'm not doing the fundraising, which is very difficult. So I understand that, too. But I'd just like to see the projects really take a swing at making up the compelling ask that these projects deserve to have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, just quickly, thank you, Mayor. Just to echo that, because I have been a consistent proponent of public-private and 50-50, I think is important. These are two important projects that are in demand by our community, and it would be really rewarding to see the community step up and support it financially and show the community how important it is. Do you have, Ms. Tucker, Chair Tucker, do you have a rough idea of what the cost, total cost would be at this point in time?
I think if it were bare bones and simple to build, it could be four, five million. I don't know if we'd go the bio-swell route and that, how that would change it. So -- and I likewise am really concerned about the parking. I would definitely want to try to find whatever measures that we could take to make sure that the parking is not impacted. So it could be a little bit more than that number. We do, like I said, in the working committee that we've put together of members of the Library Board, members of the foundation, members of the Witty group, we have within that working group a number of us that have done significant fundraising. So we understand that that's going to be part of what you'd like to see happen. So hopefully, we can come up with a plan that works. I wouldn't want to move forward if we can't.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, these two projects are really, as Mr. Avery indicated, they're nice-to-have projects, the junior lifeguard headquarters and the lecture hall. And so I'm speaking to the community that as we go through the budget process in the next six weeks, to let us know how important these two projects are, because these are taking -- will be taking discretionary dollars for important capital investments in our community, and we'd like to hear from the community. So thank you, and thank you for your leadership, both of you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Well, my only comment would be that the internet has certainly changed how a library works and all those kinds of things. And a lecture hall just sounds like a perfect thing to have there. So I'm all for that. Now, moving back to staff, do you want to go forward? And then we'll -- when they're done, we'll have -- we'll go back to public comment.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Council. I have two proposed reorganizations for you today, and I wanted to go through those with you and get some feedback from you. First of all, just to set the stage, our organizational structure is established by Newport Beach Municipal Code in two sections, Section 2.12, which establishes our departments, and 2.28, which establishes our compensation plan. And the city manager is the person who's responsible for managing our organizational structure. I want to start out with our municipal operations department and give you a little bit of background. We affectionately call them the MOD, the MOD Department. They were created in 2011 as a result of a review of operations, workflow, and staffing costs. And this was during the downturn. Prior to that, General Services and Utilities had been two separate departments for decades. However, there was a decision made that the departments should be combined and that one director would become over both yards. And if you -- I'm sure you all know, but Utilities is located on 16th, the very end of the street, and the General Services yard is located at 16th and Superior. So they're two separate locations. The one director didn't last terribly long and left the organization in 2013. And during the interim time, we created two co-directors, one over the general services function and one over the utilities function. And coincidentally, as you all well know, our Utilities MOD director left at the end of December, and our general services director left on Friday. So when we have two vacancies like this of significance, we like to take a look at the organization and see if there's any way that we can improve efficiencies or make things more streamlined. The municipal operations department is responsible for many, many functions, and they are listed on the screen before you. All the way down through refuse is currently the general services side of the house, and from water operations to graffiti removal is currently on the utilities side of the This is the current structure of the municipal operations department. I understand that it's very small. However, I just wanted to see the number of bodies that are included in this to perform all the functions that were on the previous page. There's 102 employees in all of the -- in the entire department right now. So our Public Works Department, as you well know, is -- provides all of our city infrastructure, traffic operations, right-of-way inspection, harbor resources, and CIP. This is the current structure. There are currently 37 employees. The one thing to note here, though, is they do have a between a $60 and $70 million CIP budget that they're also managing, which is most of their -- most of their functions. So currently, I wanted to show you what the full-time bodies are in both Public Works and in General Services. So Public Works for proposed fiscal year '18, '19 is 37 employees. That includes harbor resources. I want to talk about that in a minute. And then our municipal operations department has 102 employees, 57 of those which are in the general services department, and the remainder are in our utilities section. So what we're proposing to do is to move the general services function of the municipal operations department into Public Works. So we would add those 57 bodies to Public Works, and it would now become a department of 94 people. And we would leave -- we would create a utilities department again, and that would have 45 people in it. We think that this might provide some synergies, because the people who build it now are the people who have to maintain it. And so we're hoping that that will allow for some additional coordination and ability to make sure that we're maintaining our infrastructure to the highest levels possible. Sorry about that. This is what a proposed Public Works Department would look like, moving general services into the Public Works Department. And if you look at the green area, that is all the new individuals and functions that would be located within the Public Works Department. This is -- this would be what our utilities department would look like. So it was basically half of the original MOD department, and there would be 57 employees or so located in that department. In a nutshell, that's our proposal. It's not too complicated. But if you agree with this, then what we would have to do is we'd have to come back to our May 22 meeting with the proposed ordinance, because departments are created by municipal ordinance. So we would have to do a ordinance to merge general services into Public Works. They would be called general services slash municipal operations, so that name would still be around. And then we would need to create a utilities department. As part of this proposal as well, we would need to create a deputy director of Public Works for municipal operations. So that is the individual that would be out at the yard and managing the day-to-day operations of the division, and that person would report directly to the Public Works Director. And then we would need to create a utilities director for the utilities side of the house. And we would need to begin the recruitment for both positions. George's has been vacant since December, and we'd like to get that recruitment done as soon as possible. And we're looking for some feedback on what you might want to do with that. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Hurdman.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate the work put into this. Carol, other than the fact that we have had two retirements, I haven't heard specifically why this is being recommended. Is it a cost savings? Is it more efficient?
I can jump in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurdman. For me, a more traditional Public Works unit across cities involves operations as well as engineering. So this is a more traditional model, where you have the operational side working. We work pretty closely, though, today, but working more closely with the design side. So for me, again, the specific answer is I don't think we're solving a problem, but we're mirroring what is a more traditional model for cities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pieter.
Along those lines, I like the idea of the enterprise funds having their own separate management. And the water sewers are enterprise funds. Right now, they come to Public Works and say, "Build this for me." And in effect, the enterprise fund pays our Public Works Department. Do they currently kind of treat MOD as a consultant also and pay MOD for maintenance of their facilities?
No. Thank you, Mr. Pieter, for the question. All of the utility side is -- includes the utility maintainers. So.
So MOD doesn't maintain it?
That's correct. And George and Mike used to teach me to remember it this way. Utilities is the things under the ground. So anything that's maintained, anything that's under the ground is maintained by the utility side. Anything that's above the ground is maintained by the MOD side.
And what about storm drains?
That's under the ground. Although, I guess you got a V-ditch could go above the ground. But generally, storm drains underneath the ground.
But storm drains are not part of the enterprise fund?
No, but they're in there. We'd move that to the utilities section.
So utilities maintains something in the general fund?
That's correct.
And then, in effect, the general fund has to pay the enterprise fund to do that maintenance for them?
It just comes through the budget. There's a general fund component that's sent to utilities.
And likewise, there's an enterprise fund that comes to the general fund because
There's a pay.
Because.
Yeah, there's a reimbursement for like HR.
Public Works is building things and HR and finance. So it's a paper game. But as far as the management of the personnel, utilities is a separate enterprise fund, with the exception of this crossover for the storm drain, or at least the underground storm drains.
Yeah, the other ones would be electrical and oil and gas.
And utilities manages that.
I just broke my rule. We also moved street sweeping over there.
Graffiti removal.
All right. So generally, think of underground.
So street sweeping's not in MOD any longer? It's in utilities?
We moved it to utilities. That's right. We have -- the expertise is there.
It was never in MOD?
No, it was in MOD. Then we contracted out.
Yeah.
So it was appropriate that it move over there.
The contract management side of it.
Yeah. It was easy to do.
Well, I generally don't have a problem putting the maintenance in there with Public Works. Like you say, that's a typical model. And as long as you've got a manager of MOD that would work underneath Public Works Director -- Dave's got plenty of time, I know. You know, Mr. Webb's not very busy, and I say that facetiously. Utilities, I would like to see more of a distinction of the enterprise fund and keep that more separate, in a separate entity. I'm not really excited about having the utilities guys maintain things, when really MOD and Public Works, probably in other cities, do all that, too.
Well, just know that for water and wastewater, the utilities guys and gals have been maintaining it for eons. They've been maintaining their own systems.
Right. But if you look at a typical city where you've got a separate water district, the water district's not maintaining the storm drains, and the water district's not doing the street sweeping, but you still have that into the enterprise fund and the utilities group.
That is true, yeah. And maybe one idea, I mean, I don't want to try to shake things up too much, but that could be looked at by the new utilities director and the public works director.
I think that'd be a great idea. And whatever the city manager is, you would be able to shape those things.
I could just interject a little. We did that in Huntington Beach, too. Utilities took over storm drains because of similar maintenance operations. They use vac trucks and cleaners, kind of like a sewer system, so that the operations are close. Electrical is the same, because you've got electricians and things working on the electrical pumps and things. So there's kind of some synergies there, too.
And cities like Irvine that have a separate water district don't have the opportunity to share those kinds of resources. So I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Carol, with this shuffling, would you anticipate any sort of savings?
There would be some minor savings, because you would not have two co-directors. The deputy Public Works Director would be a little bit lower classification, but it's not going to be enormous.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton O'Neil.
So I was going to ask the same question, so I'll just skip to a couple others. So if I remember correctly, so Mike -- so we're talking really about taking Mike Bizani's role, moving it over into Public Works, and the folks that would have reported to Mike and move them into Public Works, but keep everyone who currently reports to Stefan essentially out in the utilities department?
That would be correct, sir.
Who is currently doing Mike's job?
We have hired an interim MOD director. His name's Tom Cochran. He's got about 35 years worth of Public Works and water experience. He's done a really, really good job for us. He came on right when George left, and he kind of helped Stefan for a little bit on a kind of very, very part-time basis. And we brought him on up for a little bit longer till we could make a determination what we're going to do with the general services side of the house and do a recruitment.
Okay. So if we kept it the way it is, you'd still -- you'd be going out and looking for someone through the normal recruiting process for Mike's position?
Yes, sir.
And right now, it's being handled by someone who's been with the city for a little while on a temp basis, but sort of he's moved over to help out on that side?
Kind of steering the ship over there, providing general direction.
Okay.
Along with Mr. Webb.
Okay.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines, what about replacement for George Murdock? You said Stefan has been doing it. Is that all going to be formalized? Are we recruiting for that position, or where does that stand?
We would recruit We would recruit for both positions.
Okay.
Do a full, full recruitment.
Oh, I see.
Once, we would come back after the 22nd, and if you approve the job description and the salary ranges, then literally the next day, we would go out and go ahead and start those recruitments.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no others up here, my comment would be, I love the idea that when you, the people who are designing it would also work next to those who are going to maintain it, mostly, hopefully, because they'll, their input will make it less expensive to maintain. Sadly, that wasn't considered in this building here. We did the opposite. Let's see how hard it is to maintain it. It's beautiful, but, okay, so that's my comments.
Okay, we have one more to go through, Mr. Mayor. And before Carol, and this is the harbor side of things, I need to warn Mr. Duffield and Mr. O'Neill that they both had a conversation with me just a short time ago about a proposed structure. We were going to pitch something else to you. It's a slight modification to that, and that is, as Carol explained, actually making it its own department. And I'll tell you some of the thinking that went behind that.
Mr. Avery was there, too?
Yes. I was able to missbrief Mr. Avery later in the afternoon, though. I was just realizing, as I'm sitting here thinking, oh my gosh, I didn't close the loop with you two gentlemen, so I apologize for that. But I, my sense is you'll like where this is going. So Carol, next.
So as this is the year of the harbor, we thought it would be a good opportunity to take a look and, after a year's worth of experience out there, to really define what we want the harbor to be, how we want to provide services out there. So as you remember, about a year ago to the day, we gave notice to the Orange County Sheriff and said we would, we would take over mooring management in 90 days. So in 90 days, it was a complete team effort. Almost every department was involved. We created job descriptions. We purchased boats. We retrofitted boats. We leased boats. We got contracts in place for towing companies. And we put space out at Marina Park, and we hired about 13 people. I've never seen, frankly, I've never seen a government work so fast and get something up and running by July 1st. But we were on, on scene on July 1st on the busiest day of the harbor. Second busiest day, I guess July 4th is the 4th. So we did all those things in about 90 days, and we've been kind of operating and trying to get our feet wet, figure out what we should be doing, how we should be doing it, getting records from the county, making sure that we are, are processing everything in an appropriate way, understanding what the real needs are out in the, out in the harbor, and how we can provide the best service to the harbor community. So we, we created a budget. And if you look at the 18, 19 expenditures, that is not currently in the budget. That, this is, this is the proposal. And the proposal is to create a brand-new department that would report directly to the city manager. And so it would be called the Harbor Department. Currently, we have Harbor Operations, which is the on-water operations, Harbor Resources, which is the permitting and land side of the harbor, if you will. And we're proposing a $2.1 million budget. Now, all of that is not new money. We had about a million dollars budgeted this last year, $936,000 in harbor operations. But this would include the addition of five full-time employees. The harbor operation right now in, on the water is being run fully by part-time people. Some of them are working 40 hours a week, but they are all part-time people, and they show up on the books as part-time people. So this is what our proposed department would look like. You would have a harbor director who would also be your harbor master. You would have an administrative assistant, that would be your clerical person in the office, who deals with the customers, who helps with reservations, who helps with transfers, who helps with daily rentals. There's, make sure that all the people have the boats that they're supposed to have on, where they're supposed to have them, they've got their moorings inspected every two years, those kinds of things. Currently, we have a contract for a dock master at one and a half people. We would propose to bring that in-house. And the reason for the .5 on both of those is because we are open on the harbor longer than 40 hours. And that half, that halftime is going to cover those after, those after-hours, those weekend hours, because we need to be open seven days a week to, to support the boating community. We have an existing harbor resources manager, and he would, he would move into this new department. And a harbor technician also supports him. Public works and city manager will probably need to discuss how we divvy up those duties because right now, the harbor technician deals with the maps and also deals with all of the permits that are on docks and on lands, and they involve engineering sometimes, and it's part of our one-stop permitting. So we would want to, we will have to take a little bit closer look about where that person would, would end up being ultimately, but that's our thought for this point. The other two additional bodies we would have, we would have lead, lead harbor services workers is what we call those folks. And we would really, which was the original intention, we really make these folks code enforcement officers as well. So that they could also, they would be the people who are in charge when the harbor master is not, not on-site. And they would also be able to provide instantaneous code enforcement for all of those things that we've been trying to, trying to get done on a, on a daily basis. You know, boats, party boats, charter boats, boats on the docks for too long, all of those kinds of issues. We think we can have a dual, a dual function out of one person. And we think those people are out there. I've talked to several people who would love to have that kind of position. And then we have really the engine of our, of our patrol on the water, and those are our part-time harbor service workers. And those folks would remain the same. We are in the process of hiring five new ones for the summer season. They, we started out with 13. We've had several drop-off, so we're hiring five new ones. So we believe our part-time complement of staff is, is going to be appropriate for the summer. But that was, that is what the initial, the initial department would look like. Also, the, the harbor director would be responsible for the harbor commission. So they would be the staff person with support from the harbor resources manager. So they would be the one managing and being responsible to the harbor commission. And this is what our proposed staffing looks like. So we would have a harbor master, the admin assistant, so we're looking at $877,000 in, in staffing. About 500 and some change of that is already in this year's budget. So this is not brand-new dollars. It's about $200,000, $230,000. That's, that is new funding because we're funding five new positions.
Carol, on the, on the numbers over the, on the cost side, is that fully loaded?
Yes, fully loaded.
Thanks.
Would that include our modification to the yacht basin contract?
We, we pulled, yes, so the dock master would become...
Wait, wait, sorry. The, Duffy's asking the BYB.
No, that would stay. We, we have not included that yet in this. I think we still, we still need a good year on our boat without taking that over.
But it's certainly an opportunity in the future, should this team feel comfortable doing that.
Well, again, a pretty simple organization. And if this is something the council is interested in creating, we would have to come back at the next meeting to change the, to change the ordinance to reflect our new harbor department, provide new job descriptions and salaries for the new positions. The harbor director, the full-time lead code enforcement folks, the dock master, begin recruiting for those positions. And at this, at that time, we would also change the first part of Title 17, which would move the authority of harbor master from the Orange County Sheriff's Department to the city and, and the newly created harbor department. We have, we have been working on this, and so we have some things already drafted, so we believe we can get that to you at the next meeting.
Mayor Protim O'Neill.
Would you mind going back a slide? I wanted to ask about a couple of the positions. So, and maybe it's worth mentioning just for a second, how the structure is set up now? I mean, right...
Sure.
Sure, because it, actually, would you mind going back maybe one more? Yeah. Would you mind just kind of explaining how it's now? Because it's a little spread out, so it might be worth explaining to folks why we're, we're considering it versus what we've got now.
Sure. So anytime you start a new function, it, it's, you kind of don't know where it's going to land or where it really belongs. And this was something very new for us. So initially, this whole operation, because Mr. Webb had the harbor resources manager and that function, we, the harbor operations function came along to him as well. I want to say, when did we flip that over? In, in March of this year, so it was the city manager, the public works director, and then the harbor master then reported to Mr. Webb, as well as the harbor resources manager and the harbor technician. So that entire, you'd add a box right underneath the city manager, and you'd see Mr. Webb when we initially started. In March of this year, no, March of...
March of the prior year.
March of the prior year. Time flies when you're having fun. We ended up taking Mr. Webb out of the harbor operations side of the house, and I became the harbor master's direct supervisor. And so I have been, I have been working with that function for the last year or so. And we now think, though, that it needs, based on the priority of the council and the importance of the harbor, that this position really needs to report directly to the city manager and work directly with the harbor commission. And that's, that's why we're asking for the change.
Got it. Okay. I mean, it makes a lot of sense to do this kind of structure. I know that we had, I know that there have been some discussion about trying to put it underneath another department. But I still think that you'd need essentially the same structure because it, it makes a whole lot of sense to put harbor operations and, and harbor resources underneath the same department, rather than having them sort of have to go from one department to another to talk about these issues. Particularly because the, the Title 17 that governs this whole, this whole area needs to be pretty cohesive and, and frankly, probably one point of clarification. And when focused on our harbor, which is remarkably well-used, obviously. And I know Visit Newport Beach had put together a, an analysis of how much the harbor's generated. I think that it makes a whole lot of sense to do this. I guess part of my question on this, and I just want to talk about a couple of the positions, is, I mean, it's tough to say it's too big when it's an 11-person department. But I'm kind of wondering, I mean, for the admin assistant being 1.5, do we need the admin assistant there all the time? Or is that, is that more of a position that could be there just during a 40-hour week and we'd be okay? The other one is, I understand the dock master. Lead code patrol, one of the things we've talked about a lot is the idea that for the, especially on code enforcement out on the water, we're not, we don't, we need to, we're doing a good job, I think, right now, since taking over the mooring management and then et cetera, is, is doing a pretty good job of getting out there and making sure folks understand what the, what's out on the harbor. I'm wondering, though, if there's only a need for one instead of two at this time, and then if we see the need growing, then we can add another body to that. I'm kind of curious what your thoughts are in terms of the admin assistant being one and the lead code patrol being one, particularly if we're having those part-time harbor service workers.
You know, I, I think we thought that really it's, that this is kind of the way we're operating now as far as part-time hours. And so we thought that that would be a good way to start. I would hate to short-shift this operation. I think it's, it's so important that we are properly staffed. If you add a halftime body, if you find you don't need it, it's really easy to let go. On, on the, on the lead, the lead code enforcement and the harbor patrol, I've also been attending the harbor commission meetings for the last several months. And they have a very strong desire to have better and more code enforcement. And we just can't get to it with the amount of staff that we have right now. Currently, we're using Mr. Cozyline, who's our code enforcement supervisor, in the harbor a couple hours a week, and it's, it's literally not enough to kind of clean things up. I would, I would suspect that long-term, this is the minimum level of staffing you're going to need to, to make this operation function. And there is some flexibility, though, with our part-time staff. At some point, if we feel like we're overstaffed or we just don't need it, there's some, there's some leeway with the harbor services worker time as well. So I think there's some flexibility there for the new director, but you don't want to give a, a brand-new director not enough resources to, to make this thing work properly.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Carol, I just want to thank you for taking this tiger and, and working with it and diving into something that, you know, was pretty new to you. And it was, it's just an evolving, and it's still evolving, and it will be for, for quite a while. And I think hopefully, everybody understands that as we move forward. Historical perspective is really, I think, necessary for the public to see why we're going this direction. And a brief outline is, we have never really managed the harbor in totality. And that wasn't by any, I think, any design, but as everybody, many people are close to it, know the harbor department, through various iterations of agreements with the city, basically assumed the role of patrolling the harbor, and then they were managing the moorings. But their, their mission is really law enforcement and not code enforcement. And did a great job. And all that while, the city was saving a lot of money. I mean, it was, we weren't, we weren't doing this. But in the last 20 years, I mean, the harbor has just steadily increased in traffic, in business, in, in activity level, people on the water. It has really grown. And anyone that is out there on a, on a summer afternoon can see that. Or on the Christmas parade, what the Christmas parade's turned into, is just an example of just sort of this explosion of activity, paddleboarders, all the rest of it. So this has really come about by, I think, the public, by the harbor commission, certainly, by our mayor being so involved in the harbor commission and seeing it, day-to-day, being a boater. Certainly, I, I've seen it. So this is, in my view, absolutely needed to maintain and improve the harbor, one of our most valuable assets, to, to, to have this system in place and to really help people maximize their enjoyment of the harbor. We absolutely need, in my view, the two code enforcement people. When it is going off on Newport Harbor on a, on a weekend day, it is really something. And there's, there's a lot that needs to be done. And I think once we get sort of a, we can tamp it down, it's like a lot of things, people sort of get, oh, there's something new going on, there's a different level of operation. But in terms of speeds and noise and residential complaints, that's a big part of it that makes us different from another harbor, from Avalon, from Long Beach, anywhere else, is that we have 1,200 residential homes on the water, apartment buildings, all the rest of it. So we're a residential harbor as, with a commercial component. But that makes it very different. Our residents should expect the quiet, peaceful enjoyment of their homes while they're on the harbor. And we have responsibility to deliver that to them, and so this is a big part of that. And certainly, having harbor resources under the harbor master is absolutely key because the harbor, harbor resources, Chris has done a great job, but we need, he needs, we need this closeness between people that are on the water. So when there's a project at somebody's home, that, all those permitting and all that effort to get that project underway is happening under the harbor master's domain there. But he's actually, or she is out on the water and probably knows that person and knows that exactly what that, that place is and what's going on. And that is, that connection is so important. So I know it's just so great to be at this, this spot right now, thanks to our mayor, who's just pushed like crazy on it, and to the staff, and to Dave and everybody being receptive, and the council coming on board. It's, it's great because this is something that's been needed for a long time. It's been growing. And we're just going to be delivering, the bottom line is, we're going to be delivering a lot more to residents and to the visitors of this town and to the businesses. Because protecting the overall environment of the harbor, where people go away happy, whether they walk back into their homes or they're getting in their car and driving inland or whatever they're doing, that's a win for us. That's a huge win for us, for everybody. So I'm really, really happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you. Well, to echo those compliments and, and objectives and goals and reorganization advantages I, and benefits, I certainly support. I have a couple of questions, though. We, if you go back to the financial, or just kind of the revenue or this expenditure side, could you just explain in two, between 2016 and 17, how... could you just explain in two, between 2016 and 17, how did that harbor resources drop significantly? What was that change? Was that a headcount change or what was going on there? Do we remember?
Part of, there's been a separation of funds in there, and I can't remember exactly, but when you see it drops like that, we, we did have other people in there at one-time water quality and that's moved out.
I know where it went. So, the contracts that Chris Miller managed were like the, the mooring contract and the Marina contract. Those were in that, the harbor resources section.
The cost of those contracts.
They shifted to harbor operations because we undid the contract. So, a number of those dollars are related to that.
Oh, they just moved up to harbor operations?
Exactly. That's why that jumped up so high.
Okay, that, that seems reasonable. Now, on the revenue side, there's no discussion here about offsetting revenues for this, these additional costs. Are there any thoughts of on additional, not additional, but through permit, just reorganizing the permit process and code enforcement? Do we see some revenue offsets?
I have some thoughts, yeah. I appreciate the question. One, you, you guys talked about earlier about charter fees and charter, if we're doing more aggressive, aggressive in a nice way, inspections of charter operations, arguably there should be a fee associated with that, not a tax. The other things that would be important to me would be maximizing the rentals of existing moorings, where we have our guest rentals or our other rentals, and making sure we're charging fair market value for those, including the slips at Marina Park. So, that's a second avenue. Another avenue for revenue, if this group is working well, we may be able to ratchet back one of our contracts at Dubalbo Yacht Base and take that, some of those, that's more diverting expenditures to these operations. So, I certainly see those as opportunities to, to build a revenue side on this and still be fair to the operations.
Well, sure, to be actual costs that happen to be recovered. Public safety, do you want to talk about that now? What will be the relationship of harbor patrol? Will they, will we be using the Newport Beach Police Department for our public safety or the harbor patrol? How does that relationship continue on the safety side?
So, on the safety side, the harbor patrol would still be responsible for 911, which they're currently doing. And if there is, you know, somebody stuck on a mooring in the middle of the night, they typically get the call and they are typically coming out. If there's a liveaboard or if there's something that we think is illegal going on, that one of our folks find, typically we will call the, the police department and we'll hop them on a boat and we'll take them out and they will deal with that, and that has, that has been working very, very well. The other folks that have a, have a piece of this is our lifeguards, and effective last week, we set up a system where somebody on the harbor will always get a, a live person speaking to them 24/7. So, after hours, our, our phone, our phones will then be transferred to Metronet. Metronet will then dispatch, they will either take care of the call then, or they will dispatch the call to the lifeguards or the PD as appropriate. So, that is an enhanced service that we really feel is important because somebody who's got a barking seal, it's kind of been hit and miss over the years, whether we respond or not. Now, we'll have some protocols in place as to what we're going to do and how we're going to respond to those things. Somebody comes in at 2:00 in the morning and wants a mooring, our lifeguards can say, you know, find, find one, an empty one and we'll, we'll catch you in the morning. And so, that, that personal level of customer service has really been expanded, I think, in my opinion. So, this department is never going to be non-reliant on other departments within this organization. They're going to rely on police, they're going to rely on fire, they're going to rely on public works and municipal operations and utilities. You know, we go out and pump boats for them if something is, is putting on water and we can't find the owner. So, it's going, it's always going to be a continuous, it's a joint effort.
So, projecting out, you're looking at, well, you say the, the essential positions that you've identified in the organization. My preference in reading the management report, I would have liked to exist, coexist or be subordinate to an existing department that is up and running and functioning, and you could see some cost efficiencies and sharing of startup expenses, et cetera. I understand for various reasons that's not working. My concern with all startups is that, I'll be positive, that I hope the success rate of coming in with this projection of need, I'd like to remind ourselves where we are next year in terms of the organization. And nobody lessons learned, I, I fully understand that. But I guess when we, you come back, what I'd like to see when you come back, May 22nd, is a three-year business model as we're looking at year one, but let's project out. I mean, I know it's projections, but the finance department can help you on projections, they're good at that. But I really, really, what are we going to be looking at, three years out in the total cost to the city and potential revenues as well? So, look at the real cost. So, we just don't look at this, wake up and three years ago, oh my God, we had no idea it was going to cost us much. But there's opportunities here. And someone mentioned that economics study that I guess, Dave, did you commission that economics study, the Beacon study that reported today, or you reported, $395 million? Is that right?
One billion.
One billion, yes.
That was, that was done for our dredging grant through Beacon Economics.
Absolutely, I'll, I'll repeat it, nearly $1 billion, and that's just the top-line revenues, and then there's obviously the, down the supply chain of additional economic benefit to the community from the harbor, based on harbor-based operations. That's phenomenal. So, we want to protect it, we want to improve it and protect it and manage it well. So, thank you. And Carol and staff, thank you for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Biata.
Just like with the Enterprise Fund or the other departments, I presume, then the harbor department would still utilize public works for dredging projects, seawalls, other major construction projects within the harbor. So, the intent isn't to staff up in this department to do those things, right? That's, I presumed that was the case. Thank you.
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
I was going to talk about the 202 million per year, but what, that, that got put up for, by Visit Newport Beach, but could you expand a little bit on what you were just talking about with Councilmember Dixon on the Beacon review?
Yes, thank you. As part of our federal application, the Corps of Engineer application, part of the requirement was to do an economic analysis of the harbor to kind of justify the benefit cost of their federal dollars coming in. So, we had Beacon as part of that do a economic analysis, and we just got that, and I sent that on to you folks. We're going to bring that out to the harbor commission and have some more discussion on it, or if you'd like, we could have the folks from Beacon come down and talk about that. The original study was done by Visit Newport and, and probably didn't go as broad, I think, and that's what's part of the talk on this economic study, go a little deeper back into the community, and, and they ended up with a little more value in there. Also identified a lot more federal and state income tax and sales tax and things we spend on it. So, I don't have all the facts in front of me, I didn't bring it, but that was the gist of the study.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty impressive. I mean, one other thing, just to throw out a financial figure, I was comparing notes on the proposed expenditures versus the total cost, the total uses of our general fund that we'd been shown earlier is 0.89% of our general fund. I mean, that's what, that's what we're representing here. And I, I know that every dollar is, we need to allocate wisely and, and work toward it. And so, when you're looking at a department that would cost less than a percent of our general fund total uses in order to protect what, the, the financial resources that you just described, that's, that's, seems like a pretty decent deal. Yeah, I'll, I'll echo the thoughts. Thank you for, for the hard work on this one.
Mr. Avery, did you want to speak again?
Could I have one more?
Sure, I didn't know if it was a mistake.
Just a quick thing in this, there, my experience has been there are very few emergencies that require a law enforcement response, just despite what we see going up and down the harbor sometimes. But, and one item here is, another responder is the commercial towing operations that we have contracts with in the harbor, and it's really important, and I know we're doing this, is that when someone breaks down or someone needs a tow or someone needs some assistance, that they respond and, and the private sector, the person in that boat can pay for that service, just like AAA. And that's a model that's been going on for a long time now, and, and people are being pulled in in their boats by these services. And Coast Guard gave up, I remember, 30, 40 years ago, the Coast Guard would go out and rescue people and pull them in, and taxpayers would be paying for this. Certainly rescues aren't charged for, but these sort of, run out of gasoline and need to tow up the harbor, these kinds of things, we shouldn't be doing. So, this is another valuable player in this, is these, these privates that, you know, have a business model that's really excellent, and they're very professional, do it well. And then the city's not in the business of towing a boat, and there's lots of stories about how that can go wrong. So, we don't, if we're not involved with that, that's, that's good. So, another key player in this to help us keep our costs down. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers up here, I just, my comments would be that, first off, just a big thanks to Mr. Kiff for taking this on a year ago, the day before the biggest day of the year, 4th of July, and Carol, both of whom are, are not big boating fans, but they, they try, and they came through with stellar remarks. So, I, the, the, let's put it this way, for many years, our harbor was a complaint-based enforcement system. So, you had to tattle on your neighbor to get something done, and people just don't like doing that. And so consequently, things would erode and you just kind of watched lots of little things that add up to big things not being taken care of. Is it life or death that a boat is sticking out way past its legal limit? Probably not, but in some ways, in some parts of the harbor, it is. So, to, and to Mr. Avery's point, in the last 20 years, we've just seen an exceptional, our harbor is just so darn popular, it's, it's crazy. It's the largest smallboat harbor in the world. And I, believe me, searched the world for an, an equivalent harbor because my livelihood is with a product that needs a harbor like this. There just aren't that many. There just, there just not that many five mile an hour patrolled, calm-water harbors, deep-water harbors that, in the world that are, that are like this. So, it's really unique. But a big thanks to you guys, I really, really mean it. I know you went out on a limb, and there could have been a lot of things that would, would not have been good, but the public has, and the folks that use the harbor just are so happy to see that people are, are, are going to enforce, that they care, and that, as, as Mr. Avery pointed out, if everyone's on the same level, playing level with the business, then it's fair. And, and that's what we're after, so everybody has a fair shot at it. And I just would like to, not bore everybody, but again, just I ditto what Councilman Avery has said, and I'm just thrilled that we're moving forward. Yes, Councilwoman Dixon's talking about a three-year budget, I think that's super important. We would like to eventually have, for Chip, a viable fire boat that he could actually put out a fire on one of those charter boats, because currently, we'd have a bit of a go of it with that, as proven with another boat, vessel that sank. So, and as well as a police boat, we need those things, and they're not, they'll happen hopefully over time and when we can afford to bring them in. So, to continue to have the finest and the biggest smallboat pleasure boat harbor in the world, these are the things that we have to, have to move on to doing. So, again, big thanks, and just, that's all I, those are the end of my comments. I don't see anyone else here. So, do we go to public or do you have more?
No, we're ready for a public comment.
Thank you. All right, please, anyone who would like to speak on this issue? Come on up.
Honorable Mayor Duffield, members of the city council, again, Bill Kenny, Chairman of the harbor commission, like to reinforce Councilmember Avery's comments and certainly the comments that you just made. Enforcement is critical, and we really do need the bodies to be able to respond, not just during the day eight to five, but 24/7. The harbor commission has, has been approached by residents early this year who were frustrated, specifically with respect to noise complaints after 10:00 PM, contacted the harbor patrol who said, "It's no longer our job," contacted Newport police who said, "We don't have the ability to get out and deal with the charter fleet." So, please give consideration to having the, the bodies to, you know, to support this harbor 24/7. Again, like to reinforce Mayor Protem O'Neill's comments, it is such a small portion of the overall budget, and it is our livelihood in this harbor. So, thanks for your support, and we're going to do our best to keep it going. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this subject?
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding these reorganizations, it would have been good to have a little bit more forewarning that this was coming up this afternoon. The, the agenda actually, more, more than just a presentation that was handed out just before the meeting started, the, the agenda, you wouldn't have guessed this being on it from, it says it's going to be about items in the proposed budget. And to the best I know, the published proposed budget and the interactive budget that we can see online has none of this change in it. So, I'm wanting a little bit of clarification here, is, is the concept that in two weeks from now, an ordinance is going to be introduced, changing the structure, and then it's going to be adopted two weeks after that? And meanwhile, the proposed budget is going to be totally rewritten to reflect all these changes in line items and departments and amounts? Or is the proposed budget going to be adopted and then this kind of happen after that? I'm a little bit confused about that. As others noted, a little strange that we're wanting to disappear a 60-person department and then create a 10-person department. Also a little strange is the nomenclature of how our management system within the city works so that it's understandable and comprehensible to people. I see in, under Mr. Webb and his public works department, we're going to have more deputy directors, and in the harbor department, we're going to have somebody called a dockmaster. I thought it used to be, since this is tied into a budget discussion, the way the budget is organized, we have departments, and within departments, the subunits are called divisions, and the people who run a division are called a manager. So, I would think we would have a public works department with a director, and the general services person would be the general services manager, and the person under the harbor director who is in charge of operations would be the operations manager. I, I think if we kept all of our departments similar, it would be easier to understand. And then finally, speaking of departments and reorganization that we need, we have another department that's not been mentioned here. Information technology has become an important part of the infrastructure of a city. We, we have an information technology division, I guess it is, I'm not sure quite what it is. Number of people are in that, it's kind of buried in the city manager's department, if the city manager's department is a department, it's not exactly. I, I think that needs some attention. Much, just as a harbor is an important aspect, the, the city's internet presence is also an important aspect. We don't have a department or a director or anything very identifiable that the public can go to for concerns about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, bring it back. All right, the, I guess we're ready to move on to the next item, which is city manager recruitment.
There is no presentation for this item, SS 5. It's in order to receive community and council input relative to the values experienced and other qualifications desired in the next city manager.
Well, not, not seeing any speakers up here, I guess I'll go out to the public on this item. Are there any speakers that would like to express their opinion on how we go about a new city manager? Seeing none, bring it back. Oh, there's one, sorry, I'm sorry, Jim, didn't see you.
Thank you, Mayor Duffield, members of the council. The, the item actually is asking for public input on the values experienced and qualifications desired in a new city manager. As I said in writing, it would be really good somewhere to hear what you are looking for in a new city manager. I haven't actually heard that yet, and I don't have much prepared. But before this meeting at the library, I went and looked at the video from August But before this meeting at the library, I went and looked at the video from August 18th, 2009, when our current city manager was being appointed. The council at that point said the reason they chose days, Kiff was among the three finalists that they had. And this is another problem with that, the city council reported that they had 50 well-qualified applicants, they had seven very well-qualified persons that were screened out of that, and then three finalists, of which Mr. Kiff was one. I don't think anybody knows who the other people were, who the other alternatives were. But anyway, Mr. Kiff was chosen because it was said he had the best vision for the future of the city and the best ideas about what could be done better. About that, I would say I think the vision part of it should be coming from you, the city council. The idea is about doing things better in the city, I think is a proper role for a city manager. And I hope the new city manager will have ideas about how to make things run better in the city. Obviously, as a manager, I would think the very first quality you would look for is somebody that has excellent management skills. Second most important thing I would be looking for is somebody who has unquestioned integrity, which I at least have the hope and feeling that we have for Mr. Kiff. And by integrity, I mean that we would look for somebody who is candidly honest. And candidly honest, I mean someone that you can always trust that you're telling you the truth. And being candid means that they're not shading the truth by leaving out something that might be important. People can say something truthful and have a meaning that's not quite what you understood. So I think they need to be straightforward and honest. I think we need to find somebody who can acknowledge that the city at times can make mistakes. City of Newport Beach is having trouble and all the time I've been watching, has trouble admitting when it does something wrong and fixing the problem. The position is usually, we did everything right, sue us if you don't like it. And I think in the same vein, the person should be committed, having themselves and staff follow our charter, our laws and our policies, which includes making sure that they ensure that you respect the city manager form of government. That's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, let's move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Please come forward.
I'm sorry, Jim, before you speak, I just also want to make a note that there is a community survey online regarding the qualifications of the future city manager. If the deadline to fill that out is May 18th and it's on NewportBeachCA.gov/communitysurvey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Duffield. I don't think I need to introduce myself again. As a non-agenda comment, I mentioned earlier the idea of decisions being made at the study sessions. I appreciate what the city manager said, but I do want to clarify what I mean by that, that there is a blurring certainly of what is the difference between giving direction and making decisions. My observation is that when the direction given to the city manager is to do something, it indeed comes back at another public meeting for ratification. When the direction is given to not do something, that's kind of the end of the matter. So the decision is really being made there. That's the concern I have. And the other concern I have, since we've heard no discussion of what you want from a city manager, it's with closed session item 4E, which is a discussion about the appointment of a new city manager. And I just wanted to remind you, as I did in writing, that my understanding of the Brown Act is that that heading can be used only for actually discussing the qualifications of flesh and blood candidates that you have. So you could be using it today to discuss whether you think Carol Jacobs would be a good new city manager for us, whether Dave Webb would be a good new city manager for us, somebody else who Lulani got a resume from. But you can't be discussing with our recruitment firm what you are looking for in a city council, in a new city manager, or discussing that among yourselves. It has to be about the qualifications, an actual person. It would be really nice if the public could get confirmation of that interpretation from our city attorney. I have asked for that, I've not gotten it, and I don't know why the city attorney cannot be candid with us as to what he will be allowing and not allowing under this discussion 4E. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none. Mr. Harp?
The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss item 4A through E, including meeting to discuss one matter of anticipated litigation where the facts are unknown to the potential plaintiff or plaintiffs, meeting with legal counsel to discuss three matters of existing litigation, including two matters titled Christine Fox versus the City of Newport Beach and one matter titled Martha Payton versus City of Newport Beach. The council will also meet with city manager Dave Kiff, assistant city manager Carol Jacobs, human resources director Barbara Salvini, and Peter Brown to discuss labor negotiations. And that's related to the unions that are listed under agenda item number 4C. The council will also meet with legal counsel to discuss anticipated litigation by Ms. Laura Preach against the City of Newport Beach. And all of this is related to an alleged Brown Act violation that set forth in her April 10th, 2018 letter, which is on file with the city clerk. And finally, the city council will meet to discuss the appointment of a city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harp.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor over here. I just want to announce that I'm going to recuse myself in closed session from item 4B3 due to an abundance of caution, just exercising an abundance of caution. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just briefly, are there any other announcements regarding recusals?
I'll be recusing from that same item on B3.
Based on potential personal financial effect, I believe. And Councilman Duffield, or Mayor Duffield?
Item 7, harbor speed limit?
No, it would be item 4B3.
Okay.
For closed session.
Yes, thank you.
For the same reason as Councilman Piattar. Thank you.
Thank you. We will recess until the 7 o'clock regular meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the May 8th, 2018 regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
I do not have a closed session report this evening, but there's a report from a previous meeting that we had. I will need to recuse myself because I have a conflict of interest related to personal financial effect. And I'll go ahead and turn things over to the city clerk.
Thank you.
So on February 13th, 2018, the Newport Beach City Council considered a claim filed by Ms. Leonie Mulva Hill against the City of Newport Beach. At the February 13th, 2018 meeting, Mayor Duffield, Mayor Protam O'Neill, Councilmember Avery and Councilmember Hurdman authorized legal counsel for the city to negotiate a settlement with Ms. Mulva Hill. Councilmember Dixon and Councilmember Piattar voted against settling with Ms. Mulva Hill. The parties have met and negotiated a settlement agreement, which was finally executed by all parties on May 2nd, 2018. A copy of the settlement agreement is now available to any interested party upon request.
All right, thank you. We will now have our invocation by Pastor Phil Hyskins from the Lighthouse of Costa Mesa Church and a pledge allegiance by Councilwoman Dixon.
Mayor Duffy, esteemed city council, whether it's in the city of Costa Mesa where I minister or whether it's in a neighboring city like Newport Beach, I always consider it a privilege to stand before these city chambers and give an opportunity, give an opportunity to do the invocation. As a pastor, it's almost expected at the foundation of what I say that the words might be rooted in some biblical truth. Well, tonight, I want to live up to those expectations. It seems the days in which we live demand of its leader is a double portion of wisdom in order to make the best decisions possible for all of its citizens. Proverbs 8, verses 22 through 31 of the Old Testament has something to say about this thing we call wisdom. The Lord created wisdom first of all, the first of his works, long ago. Wisdom was made in the very beginning, at the first, before the world began. Wisdom was born before the oceans, where there was no springs of water. Wisdom was born before the mountains, before the hills were set in place, before God made the earth and its fields, or even the first handful of soil. Wisdom was there when he set the sky in place, when he stretched the horizons across the ocean, when he placed the clouds in the sky, when he opened the springs of water and ordered the waters of the sea to rise no further than he said. Wisdom was there when he laid the earth's foundation. Wisdom was beside him like an architect. Wisdom was his daily source of joy, always happy in his presence, happy with the world and pleased with the human race. Daniel Webster, one of the great early statements of our nation, said this, "If we abide by the principles taught in the Bible, our country will go on prospering and to prosper. But if we and our posterity neglect the instructions and authority, no man can tell how sudden a catastrophe may overwhelm us and bury all of our glory in profound obscurity. Shall we pray?" Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this time here tonight. You said wisdom would be given to any of us if we ask liberally. Father, we pray that wisdom would be bestowed upon this great city council of Newport Beach, that the decisions they make here tonight and other nights would be based on wisdom, that it might represent all the citizens of this great city. And we pray these things in the name above all names. Amen. Thank you.
Flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible.
Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. All right, we'll now have city council announcements and any new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas, starting with Mr. Avery.
My only announcement is that along with most of the rest of the council, I attended the Mariners Fire Station Number Six reopening after a very concise and relatively inexpensive remodel that accomplished many objectives and also made the station much more able to withstand earthquake activity, which I was up at about 4:59 or 4:50 or whatever it was. And so, and I think, I went to the city's website at that time, I don't know, I just looked under the earthquake stuff and I read all the information, the city has an earthquake and it occurred to me that there's going to be some time in our future when we're going to want every piece of fire equipment to roll. And they got to be, the stations have got to stay up for them to roll. And so I was very, very happy to see that station and all the effort that we're putting into our other stations to protect the public from these kinds of things that can happen randomly in this crazy world of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Piattar?
Yeah, I'd like to request something for a future agenda. I would like to have the Taxpayer Protection Act, our debt protection amendment to the charter brought forth to the council so that we can make sure that we have time to put it on the November ballot.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of announcements. Congratulations in order to some of our staff members. The Golden Hub Awards by the Associated California Cities of Orange County, the City of Newport Beach received two awards, the Technology E-Government, What's Going On In My Neighborhood, and the Community Investment in Business Ambassador Program, both overseen by the Community Development Department. So congratulations. It's nice to see the city get that honor. I don't know, maybe some of us will, or all of us will be reporting on our recent trip two weeks ago now to Washington DC where Mr. Muldoon and Mr. Hurdman and myself and as well as city manager Dave Kiff met with our Washington-based consultants for two days of meeting with key legislative staff aides, with the California delegation, with our two key staff aides, to our two US senators, as well as our key congressional representatives, including Congressman Rohrbacher and other congressmen who are key on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee in the House and the Senate and Aviation Committees as well, subcommittees as well. So we had a lot of conversations and they heard from Newport Beach and what's important to us and our residents about noise and particulate matter that is spewed from jet engines. And I think we clearly were heard, this is the beginning, it was relationship building, so we weren't storming the barricades as much as introducing ourselves and representing our residents for what we believe is important next step for ensuring the quality of life in Newport Beach with regard to John Wayne Airport. Last weekend, our yacht clubs are opening, ice floes are cleared and the channels are open, so we can now celebrate our wonderful sailing community. The American Legion and Newport Harbor Yacht Club had their grand opening events last weekend and many of us were there respectively at those events. And this coming weekend, there'll be more yacht club opening days. I'm so glad the ice is cleared, it really makes a big difference for opening day. Couple meetings, things I want to announce coming up. So tomorrow, the city clerk has asked me to remind everyone, if you are applying or interested in applying for a council appointment to a board, commission or committee, the deadline is tomorrow at noon. Speak Up Newport is meeting in the community room tomorrow evening at 5:15, talking floating trash, the city's proactive approach to cleaning up the harbor, sponsored by our Water Quality Committee, who is working on that important harbor cleanup effort. And the third item Thursday is Finance Committee, Budget Time. So I look forward to seeing all of you there, 3:00 PM in the conference room upstairs at the Crystal Cove Conference Room. And I think that's it. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hurdman?
I went to DC. I won't say anymore about that. Councilwoman Dixon covered that entirely. Want to wish Mike Pizzani and Rob Williams, two employees, just the very best in their retirement. Just as a follow-up to our DC trip, this past Friday, we held our sixth airport forum in this room, well-attended. We basically reported out the results of our trip and talked about our next steps. I also attended the yacht club opening days. Yesterday, we had a conference call with our consultants that we've hired to work on the airport issue with us. It was an excellent 20-minute phone conversation that involved all of us who attended the DC trip. We defined more what our next steps will be. And then just a quick one for the people that live on Balboa Island, tomorrow evening, starting at 6:00, there will be an open house at the fire station where there'll be some artist renderings and discussions about the refurbishment of Marine Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Muldoon?
Yes, thank you. I think we have some overhead for my update as well. I did travel to Washington DC with Mr. Hurdman and Mrs. Dixon and a very fruitful trip. We learned a lot about which agencies and who to continue to work with and work with the local groups to get the flights out of John Wayne to leave with a higher altitude at a quicker, quicker time. Okay, so up here, we have a press release regarding a fire that you may have heard of that happened on May 3rd. At about 1:44, the Newport Beach Fire Department was dispatched- The cause of the fire is currently under investigation by Newport Beach Fire Department investigators. The Newport Beach Fire Department assisted on the call by Costa Mesa Fire Department and the Orange County Fire Authority, with approximately 40 firefighters responding to the incident. The Newport Beach Police Department also responded, assisted with traffic and crowd control. Listed below are pictures of the vegetation fire, so I really wanted the residents to see this. My wife and I took a fresher look at it yesterday, I think it was Sunday, actually. And you can see, you can still smell the smolder in the area. This is right adjacent to homes. I just have to give my personal thanks, behalf of the entire city, behalf of my family, behalf of our whole street, for the excellent service that we continue to get from Newport Beach Fire and Police, and of course, the adjoining agency, Costa Mesa and Orange County Fire Authority. And certainly, Mr. Duncan, you have many reasons to be very proud of your department. And I personally am incredibly grateful to the men and women in uniform in our city. The day before just up the block was Arbor Day event at East Bluff Elementary School. And in a twist of irony, well, first you see, we have some trees here, were they fifth graders? I think fifth graders, were very eager to hear anything outside of regular school activity. So they were happy to have a little recess and be presented with this flag and a proclamation. Karen Yelsey was also there from Newport Mesa. You can see in the next page that the children are sharing different drawings they did, and they discuss the importance of trees in the community. And here is the sort of, irony's the wrong word, but funny coincidence, not too far, a stone's throw from where the fire took place, the elementary school students planted three trees in the park adjacent to the acre. So I thought it was an interesting tale about the circle of life, but because of the excellent work of our own staff, it's really just two good stories. So you can see here in the final shot, you see our staff and the children who are excited to plant these trees. And I think Newport Beach has many more cities than I ever see it does per capita, and I think that our staff does an excellent job of maintaining these trees, making sure that they're trimmed properly, making sure they're done so on a regular cycle, and making sure that our community understands how important they are to our, to our city. So thank you very much, staff, for two excellent jobs well done.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim O'Neill.
Sure, just a few things. So I was able to attend and start the Orange County Marathon on Sunday at the brisk time of, yeah, you're very welcome. Yeah, I was, I was there at 5:30 AM, starting the race, and someone had asked how I was doing. I said, "It's great, it's a little early." They said, "Ah." I said, "It could be worse." They said, "How?" I said, "You could be running a marathon." They didn't really think that was funny, but the, but we had a pretty good time. And, man, we had almost, I think, over 10,000 people running either the marathon or the half marathon, not to, not even including the Saturday. So kudos to the Orange County Marathon folks for putting that together. Let's see, Saturday morning, we've got bunnies and books over at the library, and then, Mr. Webb, do we have a slide for CRNRs? So we have the Newport Beach Resident Document Shredding Event, Saturday, May 12th, 8:00 to noon, at the Arbor Day Carpool Lot. It's free to residents, no limit on quantity, sponsored by our trash hauler, CRNR. And then, on Sunday, just a very special Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a few, a couple announcements. So this is the new 2018 Harbor Guide that was the brainchild of Ralph Rothheim, and he came up with this idea to give to transient voters and those who need information. We didn't have this for ever, and I think we've had it maybe five or six, seven years. But this Harbor Guide goes a long way in explaining to transient voters, as well as our residents, what's available, some of the rules, you know, various pieces of information that are valuable when you don't know, or you're visiting our harbor. So that is a good thing. Next. Today, we opened up this fire station, and when my first year as a councilman, I was poring over the budget, and I got to this line item of $900,000 for a fire station, but there was already a fire station there. So I asked my new best friend, Dave Webb, "So, Dave, help me." He said, "Well, we bought a new fire truck, and unfortunately, new fire trucks are a little taller, and she wouldn't fit in. She was about four inches too tall." And so I thought, "Well, we can, we can work something out, right? I mean, there's a sawzall, you can do something, and lower the floor, do something." And then I learned that with a municipal project, you need to do it right, and this is an area, a building, when there's times of need for the citizens to retreat to, so this thing has to be built accordingly. And it is, it's a fabulous facility. The seismic method that they use to protect it is fabulous, and on and on and on. So it was worth every nickel. It's finished, it was complete, we opened it today, and now, our fire truck has a real home to live in. And then, this morning, this is a project, you probably don't see much of it, because it's disguised by the bridge as you drive your car over, but there's been a, since the bridge was originally built, a very cool way to go across Coast Highway underneath it on a bike path. Well, with erosion and the tide action and so on and so forth, it was, this path became in peril. And thank goodness to Caltrans, they came along and rebuilt it at great expense, by the way, and did a lot of other things to enhance that area. So if ever you would like to use the bike path in that area, give it a shot. It is safe and sane and ready to go again. So we appreciate that from the Caltrans people. All right. Moving on, Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through seven. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. All right, so council, any items to be pulled from the consent calendar? Councilman Avery.
I have none.
Thank you. Councilman Piattar.
None.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
I would think I'm going to pull six. Mr. Kiff, did I mention that to you? Item six, please.
All right. Councilman Hurdman.
None.
Councilman Muldoon.
Doubt.
Oh, step, sorry. Mayor Pro Tim O'Neill.
None.
And I myself am recusing on item seven?
That's correct, and Councilmember Muldoon mentioned to me that he was going to recuse himself from agenda item number five, based on his business interests. And then, Mayor Duffield is also based on your business interest for agenda item number seven.
Okay. I move approval of items one through seven, with item number five showing a recusal from Councilmember Muldoon, item number seven showing a recusal from Mayor Duffield, and number six being pulled by Councilwoman Dixon.
I'll second.
Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry, public comments, always forget that. Public comments on the consent calendar, please come up.
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. There was a time in Newport Beach when the study session agendas had very cryptic announcements on it that made a considerable guessing game to figure out what the topic of discussion was going to be. Kind of reached a low point one afternoon, when the agenda said there was going to be a discussion of the swamp of the frogs. That was the total announcement, and not a whole lot of people in Newport Beach knew what the swamp of the frogs was, or why we'd be interested in it. The study session agenda announcements have gotten better over the years. They're pretty good now, you can tell what's going to be discussed. I just wanted to point out, on the consent calendar, it seems to be moving in that direction of the bad old days of the study session agendas. Our recent consent calendars, we had a couple of items about the Port Master Plan on them that never mentioned Port Master Plan. It said AB or 2, something or other. Tonight, item five, it's good, good that Councilman Muldoon is recusing himself on that, but I think few people in Newport Beach would know what a CAD/RMS server is, or why we would want to spend $125,000 to replace the one we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, bring it back. Any comments? Nope, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, so we are pulling item number six. Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I've asked staff to explain this. I don't have any problems with it, I just think the community needs to understand a little bit more what we're doing, just in the spirit of transparency and understanding how we deal now under our local coastal plan vis-à-vis the Coastal Commission. So if you could just explain this a little bit more fully, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, thank you, Councilmember Dixon. My name is Simone Georgis, I'm the Community Development Director. Mr. Mayor, do you have a brief presentation, if I can go ahead and get the PowerPoint going?
Sure.
Now, with me, I have Patrick Alfred, who's our Planning Manager and Coastal Expert, and so this item is a request to modify our categorical exclusion order. So I'll start from the beginning. Development projects in the coastal zone require a coastal development permit, and we see that throughout all of Newport Beach, the peninsula, and the islands. Just picking just a standard, our standard projects, which is scrape a house, build a brand-new house, in a coastal zone, you need a coastal development permit. So what is a categorical exclusion, or we call it CAT-X? This is an order given to us by the Coastal Commission, that if it meets all the requirements of our local coastal plan, that it can be excluded from a coastal development permit. And these are projects that have no potential significant adverse effects on our coastal resources or our public access. So we actually have a CAT-X category throughout the city. Those projects do not require a CDP, but there's an issue with the CAT-X that the Coastal Commission has granted us. So these are the requirements of what is excluded. So we have our standard residential zones, R1s, R2s, RBIs, but there are some specific exclusions. Any, any house or any structure on the shoreline can't be excluded from a CDP, and items that are, properties that are in gated communities. Item number two is really important for us. The CAT-X excludes properties that have a maximum floor area limit of 1.5. Now, that's a significant issue for staff. So what does that mean? Well, in the past, the Coastal Commission was able to exclude properties from a coastal development permit. The executive director of the Coastal Commission had authority through the Coastal Act to waive the CDP. So since 1998, there's been 2,750 projects in Newport Beach that were waived from a coastal development permit. Staff has no ability to waive anything. And that's, that's our challenge right now. So if we look at our map of properties that are subject to a coastal development permit, we can see here, we highlighted properties that are, that are, can be built to a floor area limit of two, which is the peninsula and Lido Isle, and that's currently in our zoning. So you take your buildable area of your lot, multiply that by two, and that's what you can build. Those properties cannot be waived from a coastal development permit. Now, when you get more southerly on our peninsula, you can see that there's two areas that have a floor area limit less than two, which is Babo Island and Coron del Mar. There are, floor area limits are at 1.5. Those are the only areas where staff can exclude development from a coastal development permit. Everywhere else has to get a coastal development permit. So what does that mean? Well, what we want to do is, we're asking the city council if, to give us authority to approach the Coastal Commission and say, "Just amend our categorical exclusion order from a floor area limit of 1.5, change it to a 2.0." That'll allow more properties to be excluded from a coastal development permit. And so what does that mean? Well, it's going to save an applicant time, up to eight weeks, and there's a cost to any coastal development permit, it's about $2,000, we estimated, of staff time and the noticing. Additionally, from a staff resources, each application takes about 12 hours just for the coastal development permit side, not even to do the plan review or anything else related to the project. So we're asking the council if, if we can go ahead and approach the Coastal Commission and amend our categorical exclusion order from a 1.5 to 2.0. It's going to save the applicant time and money, and it's also going to save staff time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Simone, and I may move support of that. I just wanted to have that extra clarification on the record. Thank you.
I don't, any comments up here? All right, let's go to the public. Any comments from the public on this item?
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Unlike item five, this item number six does have a good notice on it, that people know what the subject is. I am a little surprised, since this is a planning issue, that it was not reviewed by the Planning Commission, and just kind of came out of the blue with no preparation, or the public having any idea that the proposal was going to be put to you, until this agenda was released last Thursday afternoon. The presentation you heard went by pretty quick, a little too quick for me to follow all of it. I don't think it was totally accurate. First of all, you should understand that in the past, when the Coastal Commission waived the coastal development permit requirement, it didn't mean it just was excluded, and there was no permit requirement. It meant that it was reported in a separate administrative section called Deputy Director's Report at the Coastal Commission meetings, so that the public would at least know that these proposals were being considered, and there was a chance to appeal them also. I think the presentation was a little inaccurate, pointing, if it did, to areas like Irvine Terrace and so forth, saying it was needed there. I believe, if I understood the staff report, it's needed only within the appeal area, and I don't think that is within the appeal area. That's all getting a little bit technical, but the main point I would make is, this provision has been in the categorical exclusion order now for 41 years. People in the city are concerned about oversized houses being built. This was extra scrutiny given, not to all oversized houses, but to the large houses on small lots. And I have not heard a clear explanation of why the extra scrutiny has been there for the past 41 years, and I would be hesitant to remove that extra scrutiny until I understood what the reason for it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Any comments from up here? I don't see any, so.
Call for the vote.
Let's call for the vote.
Sorry, was there, there was a motion?
Wasn't a second.
Was there a second?
I'll move approval of item number six.
Okay.
Since no one else has done that.
I made a motion, so you second.
I'll second it.
Perfect.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come up.
Good evening, Mayor Duffield and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. This is just a simple, little, tiny thing I wanted to bring to your attention. I looked at the survey that was on the website and was passed around for what we wanted to have in a new city manager, and much to my surprise, it limited the comment area to 240 characters. I was trying to explain some of the things that I was marking, so that it would not be misunderstood, there'd be clarity, and I had it up to something like 600 characters. And I really don't understand why that kind of small limitation, that was pretty small. I think it was not, I think it's too late to do anything about it, but I just thought I would let you know that was a little bit frustrating. I didn't feel like, I guess I need to write a separate letter, that's probably what I need to find the time for it, but that's my comment.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Non-agenda items.
Good evening, my name is Nicole Zaradi. I work for a nonprofit organization that's based in Santa Ana, but we work all throughout Orange County, and I do impaired driving prevention. So I work with, I do presentations at schools and colleges. We work and we work with restaurants to provide free responsible beverage service training, so training managers and bartenders and servers on how to not over-serve people, how to intervene when somebody who's had too much to drink wants to get in their car and drive home. So we do a lot of that throughout the year, and every year, we want to publicly recognize a couple of establishments in each city that we work in for their continued support of RBS, Responsible Beverage Service. And so this year, we wanted to recognize the alley. I don't know if you know about that one off PCH and Balboa and Class of 47. They both have been very supportive of RBS. They send all of their new employees, they send old employees that need to be retrained. So we just wanted to say thank you to them and let you know that we are recognizing them for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Whoops. Types.
Thanks. Timer. My name is Ruth Kobayashi. I live in Harbor Cove, across from the Police Department, and I'm a parent of, well, for two more months, I'm a parent of a Coron del Mar High School student until she graduates. And two quick things. One is, I just wanted to acknowledge that the compost giveaway that C R and R handled was super helpful, and in a couple months, my herbs are going to really thank you for that in my herb garden. And the second thing is, I also wanted to acknowledge the significance to the students and the staff at the high schools for the Recreation Department putting together the study break things, if you recall those, that are happening at Oasis and Marina Park. And I know they want to get the attendance better at those, but I want to let you know that our PTA has been putting the word out more aggressively through social media, and I think it would be a great thing to look at again next school year, fine tune, maybe some methods of getting the word out. But as you know, it's been a really rough year for young people in our city, and for us to get to a healthier place, it takes cooperation and relationships between our cities, our staffs, our high schools, our law enforcement, obviously, most of all, our parents. But I just want to encourage you that it's not unnoticed, and it is going to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, okay, come on up.
Good evening, Susan Skinner. The City Council is expected to act in the best interest of its residents. Your actions to remove Mr. Kiff are clearly not in the best interest of the residents of Newport Beach, but have been done to serve your own selfish political interests. By itself, the forced retirement of Mr. Kiff is reprehensible. Collectively, your actions are beneath contempt. When this story first broke, you denied that you had forced the retirement of Mr. Kiff. The information courageously provided by Diane Dixon revealed that you were lying. It is believed that you were preparing to remove Dave Kiff eminently, and since his contract was specifically written to remove him as soon as you name an interim city manager, I think this assumption is likely correct. The only question is who will replace him, and we can only hope that you select a competent administrator instead of a political crony. I will add that if you guys are not planning to remove him eminently, I would appreciate an affirmation that you are not, and you're going to allow him to continue till August. I also would add that the actions of placing the agenda item in the closed session, if that was not specifically about hiring an alternative administrator, it is, in my opinion, a violation of the Brown Act, a fact which I have told you, and so has Jim Mosher. So if Dave goes on paid administrative leave until his official retirement in August, the total cost of removing him will be about $300,000. You claim to be fiscal conservatives, but you are not. You are perfectly happy to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of my tax money to remove the best city manager in the state a few months early to serve your political purpose. We will add this to the list of financial missteps that you have already made, such as refusing the gas tax and the ill-fated City Hall audit. Character matters. Mr. Muldoon, your actions are unethical and I believe illegal. Mr. Muldoon, when you're describing your public service to your future children, are they going to be proud of what you've done? Mr. Piotta, this is exactly what we have long since come to expect from you. Mr. Duffield, was it worth the loss of community esteem to remove Mr. Kiff? Mr. O'Neill, your father is a federal judge. Do you think his high opinion of you will be influenced by your actions in subverting the law? Someday soon, I hope to live in a city where the rule of law is respected and ethics and transparency are valued traits. I don't live there now.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
All of us are kind of getting tired of this, I'm sure you guys must. My name is Lynn Swain, 46-year resident of Newport Beach, and I just can't believe the arrogance of you, sitting up there with your smirks to all of us, your voters. You showed contempt for your colleagues when the four of you conspired to replace our city manager in secret, without public notice and without notice to any other of the three council members. And now, you have the audacity to go after Councilman Hurdman for his honesty in speaking the truth and what should be done within our city. You showed contempt for the taxpayers when you wasted literally hundreds of thousands of tax dollars in unnecessary severance pay and legal fees in order to illegally remove our city manager. This is on top of the hundreds and thousands you spent on your ill-conceived port plan, the political City Hall audit, payoffs to your campaign donors, Woody's Wharf, and your aborted refusal to budget our gas tax revenues. And now I think you've all reached an all-time low. Let us be perfectly clear, the primary qualification for a new city manager is his ability to act in the best interest of our city, Newport Beach, and not to agree with your agenda. So please, be sure to disclose to your candidate, if they come to Newport, they may be ousted with you in November, if they toe your foolish line. As we begin the budget process, it is particularly important to have an independent, qualified city manager to replace the one you four have so blatantly forced to retire. This time, your contempt has gone too far. I speak for hundreds of residents when I say, "We will work every day until November to ensure you are held accountable and removed from office." That is, if the courts don't beat us to it, and that is clearly in the works. There is a name for the style of contempt you have shown our residents. It's called corruption, and it will not be tolerated in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Lys Johnson.
I'm Enzo Johnson, and this is our sister Coco. In 2011, when we were one and three years old, our family became aware of the dangerous public safety issue taking place at San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station only 31 miles from our home in Solana Beach. Now that I am eight and Lys is 10 years old, we are able to speak for ourselves, and we are asking you, council members, to help ensure the safety of children like us here in Newport Beach and all of Southern California for generations to come.
Please do not allow Southern California Edison and Holtech to abandon San Onofre's radioactive waste on our beaches in San Diego County. It is our great, great, great grandchildren who will inherit this problem if we do not address it now. This would mean no more surfing, sailing, snorkeling, or any ocean sports that all Southern Californians love to do. Thank you for listening and doing everything you can to protect our homes, our health, and our ocean-loving lifestyle in San Diego County, and especially here in Newport Beach. I know that you will do the right thing to keep all children here safe from a nuclear disaster at San Onofre. Thank you, Newport Beach.
Thank you. You guys were great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Torgan Johnson. I'm a father of four, these are three of them. I'm also a Harvard-trained planner from Solana Beach. In June of 2013, my family hosted the former Prime Minister of Japan, Mr. Naoto Kan, and the former U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission Chairman, Dr. Yasco, to speak at the San Diego County Administrative Center at a public conference we organized titled Fukushima Ongoing Lessons for California. The Prime Minister's lessons for California are, and these are relevant to what's happening at San Onofre right now, is that severe nuclear accidents happen, so plan for them. The Prime Minister was most concerned about the nuclear waste at Fukushima, not the reactors melting down. And he said that had Japan lost control of the stored nuclear waste, about the same amount that we have here at San Onofre, that he was prepared to issue an evacuation order to permanently evacuate Tokyo, the largest city in the world with a population of over 50 million people, that was 160 miles away from the waste at Fukushima. That's what this nuclear waste really means, and that's what you're not hearing from Southern California Edison. I'm here tonight representing a coalition of business leaders, elected officials, scientists, former military leaders, and concerned citizens in San Diego County who are deeply concerned about the nuclear waste plant being implemented at San Onofre as we speak. Some of those concerned are a presidential advisor on high-level radioactive nuclear waste, the four presidential administrations. Another one is a former Rear Admiral of the U.S. Navy, who was in charge of the U.S. Navy Southwest region, all the way out to China. They're speaking out very clearly about this, against this plan right now, and their concerns are that the radioactive waste canisters are in thin-walled, unmonotable canisters that cannot be repaired, and they have known defects already in the four canisters that were loaded. The radioactive fuel assemblies being stored on the beach here are being canned, the fuel is explosive due to hydride formation that builds up on their surfaces. There are site hazards that have not been discussed by Southern California Edison, those have been concealed and not shared. I think you need to know about those things. I heard the word wisdom, and that's a key word here, is that we need to have the wisdom of independent experts come and speak to you on these issues. I ask that you agendize this item. We have several city councils already that have said yes, they'd like to hear more. The Citizens Engagement Panel, that's been really the forum for all the cities here to voice their concerns, is a very limited discussion that's not focused on all the truth, that really would impact a city like Newport Beach and all the way down to Solana Beach. So I ask that you agendize this item. We'll bring the experts here, we'll have an intelligent discussion, and you hear for yourself and decide whether or not what's happening at San Onofre is wise. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for this time.
Thank you.
My name is Jean Wagner. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for 48 years.
Can you grab the mic? And thank you, just for the record, thanks.
My name is Jean Wagner.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Newport Beach for 48 years. In that time, I have supported council members, and I have adamantly disagreed with them. Never, never have I been so ashamed of the majority of the City Council. Due to my occupation, I have been surprisingly, to many, quiet publicly over the past 20 years. But the council's majority's actions regarding our respected and much-loved city manager have awakened a furious anger in me and in many other residents. I have worked with and observed Mr. Kiff since he worked with Marion Bergerson, since he was appointed Assistant City Manager, and then City Manager. I have witnessed the respect he has given by other city managers, cities, the county, and Newport's residents. Your failure to recognize what Dave has brought to Newport Beach is a reflection of your own inadequacies and selfish motivations. I have been embarrassed lately when colleagues and government representatives have sought me out and asked, "What is wrong with Newport Beach? How could they lose Dave Kiff?" It is best that I do not tell you what my response has been. I have been told I am like an elephant. I never forget any detail, and I never forgive a wrong done to a friend or colleague. You can be sure I will remember what has been done to our much-respected and admired city manager, and will devote every free hour to the next council election.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Now, we're going to have oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Thank you, Mr. Piotta.
None.
Mrs. Dixon?
I have none.
Mr. Hurdman?
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon?
No, but I have a quick comment. You know, Dr. Skinner, you had emailed me about your son, and I imagine he is very proud of you. Because even though none of us are human beings, we strive to be the best we can. And I can say with certainty that my unborn son, which I'm happy to announce is a boy actually, will be proud of his father, and in part because I will raise him to treat everyone with respect and love, and to be the best person you can be, which doesn't mean you're perfect, but it certainly does not mean you say bad things about other people. And I think really that's what makes character, and I think those children who we saw speak earlier, there's something that we like about the innocence of children and their positive attitude. And, you know, I can't let something like that go without being responded to. I just think, you know, it's so inappropriate. And I'll be very proud to raise a loving son, and I know he'll be proud of me.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
I'll go with none.
And I have none. All right, moving on to the next item, it's Community Development Block Grant.
We've requested a continuance on that item.
All right, just wanted to make sure. Item nine, an ordinance to allow onsite consumption use in facilities that manufacture alcohol beverages.
Thank you again. I'm Simone Jurges, I'm the Community Development Director. With me, I have Chelsea Crager, she's the Associate Planner. The item before you this evening, council members, is that we want to change the code. In our industrial zone, we allow alcohol manufacturing, so we want to change the code to allow tasting rooms that go along as an accessory use to these alcohol manufacturing establishments. I'm going to hand it off to Chelsea, she has a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Duffield and council members. As Simone said, I'm Chelsea Crager, Associate Planner with the Planning Division. This is the, an ordinance for tasting rooms in conjunction with alcoholic beverage manufacturing. Currently, alcoholic beverage manufacturing, as Simone mentioned, which includes breweries, wineries, and distilleries, is defined as a food processing use, which is a permitted use within the industrial zoning district. However, currently, there's no process in place that allows for onsite consumption or tasting rooms in conjunction with this use. So a little bit of history on how this came before you. In summer of last year, planning staff was approached by a brewery considering opening a brewery and tasting room in the Newport Beach industrial area. At this time, the brewery would have been able to opening, to open that manufacturing aspect, however, they would have been prohibited from serving alcohol in their tasting room, which was a key component of their business. The following October, planning staff took this consideration to the Planning Commission to allow breweries in the industrial zone. The Planning Commission initiated the code amendment and requested that the amendment also consider wineries and distilleries with tasting rooms. On March 22 of this year, staff brought forth a draft ordinance to the Planning Commission. The Commission recommended approval of the amendment with a few changes. The changes included amending the discretionary review from a minor use permit to a full conditional use permit, and also updating the parking requirement. The increase in level of review means that the The increase in level of review means that the Planning Commission would review each new establishment instead of just the zoning administrator. Additionally, the parking requirement was increased from one per 500 to one per 500 or is required by use permit, and I'll touch on that again in a little bit. At the Planning Commission meeting, two people spoke in opposition to the ordinance with concerns primarily related to parking and compatibility of alcohol sales in the industrial area. Three people spoke in support of the ordinance, primarily stating that it would create a gathering place for people in the area. This code amendment would affect these areas here highlighted in yellow. Thirty-nine properties in total and about 45 buildings. And you can see the zoning districts here. So we're looking at the gray once again highlighted in yellow. For a little bit of reference, you can see Carden Hall, Coastline Community College, and Orange Coast Winery, which is right here. Those are all the zoning districts. You can also see some of the surrounding zoning districts, including residential, which is here in brown, and up here is Costa Mesa. Orange Coast Winery is identified here. It's an interesting case. It's near the intersection of Babcock and 16th Street, and it is a winery with a tasting room. It was approved in 2010, which was prior to the adoption of the newest zoning code. It was approved based on findings that it would be consistent with the future zoning code. Other alcoholic beverage manufacturing uses in the city but not shown here include Newport Brewing Company, which is a restaurant located on the peninsula, and Newport Beach Vineyard and Winery, which is located near Santa Ana Heights. The industrial zoning district is intended to provide for areas appropriate for a wide range of moderate-to-low-intensity industrial uses, such as light manufacturing, research and development, and limited accessory and office uses. Some examples include warehouses, retail sales, business and professional offices, health and fitness facilities, laboratories, among others. The draft ordinance creates a brand-new land use definition, which is shown here. It creates a use separate from food processing and classifies all alcoholic beverage manufacturing under a brand-new definition. Include all alcoholic beverage types, so as previously mentioned, it was updated from breweries to also include wineries and distilleries. The tasting room would be accessory-only, would not be permitted to stand on its own, and would be defined as the floor area where alcohol may be consumed. It's limited to a maximum of 750 square feet. Some of the standards that are included in the draft ordinance are here. Once again, mentioning that accessory, the tasting room is intended to be accessory to the manufacturing use only. The maximum size is 750 square feet of interior space and 1,000 square feet of outdoor patio. There's no size limitation on the manufacturing aspect of the business. The draft ordinance also limits hours of operation of the tasting room from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., so there are no lay hours. There are no limitations on the hours of operation of the manufacturing aspect. Again, this is only for the tasting room. Live entertainment and food service may be permitted on a case-by-case as a part of the conditional use permit reviewed by Planning Commission. It should be noted that these standards are included in the draft ordinance as regulatory limits. Each operational standard may be further limited through conditions of approval for each individual business. Back to the parking requirements. It's one per 500 square feet of gross floor area or is required by use permit. This allows Planning Commission flexibility in the parking required for each location as appropriate. This concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Pieter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Planning Commission had two changes, you said. One of them was they wanted to review it because they wanted to see it as a full-blown CUP. And was the other one parking?
The other one was parking.
And what was their concern about parking?
There were a few concerns brought up by residents that the on-street parking was impacted, so they added that in as a flexibility measure.
I am not understanding. So you're adding the accessory use of under 750 square feet for the tasting and 1,000 square-foot patio.
Maximum.
So is there additional parking requirement for that?
If the Planning Commission determines that that specific location warrants extra parking, they can require it as a part of the use permit.
So in other words, you're determining the parking based on the fact that it's a manufacturing facility, and you park it accordingly?
That's correct.
And you're not asking for any additional parking?
That's correct.
Is there a reason why you're not asking for additional parking?
Primarily because the use is intended to be accessory, and so the primary use is manufacturing. That's the parking, that's what the parking is based on.
But when you're doing a retail use or a restaurant use, you differentiate the different areas within a building and what they're being used for. My thought is this. If it's a technical review, I think it should be a zoning administrator, not a Planning Commission object. There's still opportunity for the public to give input. Now, if they want to do an entertainment license, now they're becoming an entertainment venue. They're not a tasting room in a manufacturing facility. So I could see that being a full-blown CUP. I could see adding the additional parking for, you know, the tasting room, and if they decide that they want to do a shared or a, some sort of a parking analysis that show that they don't need it, then it would get bumped up to the PC. But to me, I would rather see a requirement of the parking and then a review by the ZA to make sure that they're complying with the technical square-footage areas, and then you've got the opportunity for neighbors to give input. In other words, let's make this simple. And if they want to get exceptions to it, then take it to the Planning Commission. Have it be a two-step approach. And I don't know if that means you'd have to bring it back to us again at a later date if the council agreed with those kinds of corrections, but that would be my perspective on it. And I don't like the live entertainment at all. I would have no problem not including live entertainment allowable under a CUP or any other use. If they're a manufacturing facility, I don't see the need for live entertainment. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon, please.
Thank you. Could you pull up the map, the area map, please? How many schools did you say in the proximity of this area?
Carden Hall and Coastline Community College.
Well, right across on the next block is the Pacifica Christian School. So there are three schools in this area. And so that's a concern in my mind. The hours of operation, as you would consider permitting, is 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and that's obviously during school hours. And to Mr. Pieter's comment about, I agree with prohibiting live music and/or dancing. If it quacks, it's a duck. This is a bar, or soon to be. All it has to do is go to the Planning Commission or the zoning administrator, I guess the Planning Commission. But it concerns me, and didn't you say that we had an applicant and then they withdrew? So we have no current applicant at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So instead of making an isolated conditional use for this particular use, I have no problem with the manufacturing, obviously. We're going to be heading into our general plan update process in six, eight months. Why not look at the whole area and look and see if we need to make any zoning adjustments ultimately? We don't have a pending application. Our doors are not being beaten down to put in a tasting room. I don't know what the rush is. Let's just do it right. That would be my recommendation. So I would either postpone this or refer it back to the Planning Commission and say, "Put it in the hold pile for the general plan update." That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
He was a commissioner. He were.
I have spoken with a concerned tenant in that area, in the manufacturing area, and they mentioned that there's quite an odor that emanates from the brewing processes. Don't know about that? That something had?
No, we don't have any knowledge of that.
Okay. But, you know, the photos, to me, the one photo looks like a bar to me, you know? Lots of bars still. Seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, that's a lot of tasting area. And there's been a trend, I think, you know, for those of us that enjoy wine, you know, and you go to a tasting room, and it's quite large and very nice, and there's a lot of things going on. It's really, you're having a nice lunch with multiple glasses of wine and all that stuff. That's all great, but we're, I think, this is opening the door to sort of a normalizing more bars perhaps in an area that's, may or may not be impacted by. You think manufacturing, you know, people are, there's no one around at night, but there's some residential here and there. So I would just like to spend a little more time on it, just to kind of get a sense of how the neighborhood feels, that, get some public input, make sure we notice everybody, and I'm sure that's happened, but this is, to me, is, this district is in my district, and it's sort of, you know, it's a very mixed area. Costa Mesa's done a number of these things. Right now, there's a place called the Boathouse Collective, which is right next door to a new townhome deal that's like within five feet of it. The townhomes grew into it. So there's consequences to this, I think, and, you know, we sort of need, I think, to think about this particular area, Newport Beach, for the future, because, you know, whether we like it or not, much of this area in Newport and Costa Mesa will eventually be, become residential, and then, you know, have some zoning that doesn't quite work for that. And so I really look at this and make the right decisions here, because this property, I think, in the next 20 years, all this area will undergo some pretty serious change, I would think, given what we're seeing in Costa Mesa, and there's the pressures on the housing demands of the state and what we want to do as a city. So I'd like to see just slowing it down and working to, maybe thinking about it in a more global way. Thank you.
Mayor Protem O'Neill.
That's a fair point about the timing. 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. during weekdays. I mean, Councilmember Dixon's right, there are two high schools right next door, to the extent that we're talking about. I would not really be in support, not really, I would not be in support of hours of operation during or right near high school hours, especially, I mean, I've been to tasting rooms. The ones over in Costa Mesa aren't that large, but they're not next to high schools either. And so there's no real, there's no real threat of students walking by and grabbing something or having someone buy it for them on their way home. So it just doesn't make sense to me to have tasting rooms open during or right next to school hours. So I think we'd have to do a little bit more work on that, on that aspect as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
And then you add the food element into it, as far as crackers and cheese or whatever it is they're planning on serving, and you've, you're opening the door to a longer stay than might have been experienced in a tasting room. Personally, I just feel this whole thing is inappropriate, and I do not support it.
Thank you. Councilman Muldoon.
Since we're all chiming in, I think, when I think of these tasting rooms, they're dual-purpose. They're running operations out of the warehouse component, and then they have a public-facing aspect as well. And my experience has normally been to do this on the weekends. So I think that if I were to support this, which I'm not sure I would, I'm probably going to refer a lot to Brad on this because it's his district, that it should be restricted to weekends, because kids are coming and going to practice or recitals, or they're at school earlier than they thought, or they're later than they thought. And we wouldn't put a bar across from a regular school, so why would we put a bar across from some of these private schools? That's sort of my thought, but I think on the weekend, you know, there is a valuable use to some of these operators if it doesn't get out of hand. If it's going to have too much of components of a duck, as Councilwoman Dixon pointed out, then I think it should get waddled away, and I won't support it.
Thank you. And my comment would be, I've been up there, I hate to say, 48 years, and I'm still up there. It's my neighborhood. There's just no parking. It virtually is, in the day, when it's, when people are working, there's virtually zero parking, really, in some of the streets. Now, there might be a couple of properties that's not true, but in the back or something, but, boy, that place is so popular now with what's going on. Yeah, I know, I'm with Councilman Avery, the future of that area is most likely residential. It's a mile and a half from the beautiful ocean and the beach and everything, and sadly, manufacturing is leaving us there. It was the boat-building capital of the world at one point. But anyway, if they were purely manufacturing, maybe, but I don't know about the VOC allotments, whatever goes on when you're making that stuff, and the smells and such. It doesn't sit well with me on that, and so I would probably not be in favor of this as well. Anyway, seeing no other comments up here, let's hear from the public on this item. Are there any speakers that would like to?
Bill Dunlap, Newport Beach. I thought I'd shed a little light on this since it came out of the Planning Commission, which I sit on. Your comments are well-framed. If Chelsea could put the slide of the area. We attempted to try to allow this use, understanding that the schools were there, we're quite aware of that. And our issue was, we were attempting to change the zoning, which is spot zoning, which you can't do. We did not want to have any of these facilities along the gray strip that backs up to the residential and on the piece that would be next to the two schools. So that was our goal. That couldn't be done because you can't do spot zoning. Where maybe the general plan could change that, and we could eliminate that area where these potential breweries and tasting rooms could go, which would be in the northern section of it. The limiting of hours was discussed as well, and we had no problem with that, and I didn't even want to go till 11 o'clock either. These tasting rooms really only operate after work, so the parking issue, which is a parking issue up there, we understand that, their main patrons are coming after work. There is, and you've visited the ones in Costa Mesa, there's actually three on Randolph Street right now in Costa Mesa, and Anaheim, I believe, has five breweries. And what we were attempting to do, based on the current zoning, before we start thinking about the general plan, is trying to keep manufacturing in an area that was historically manufacturing. As you've all alluded to, it's all leaving, and if this is all going to become residential, then this is something we all need to discuss in the general plan review. So understand your concerns. That's why we wanted to do a conditional use permit only, so each case would be looked at, not through a zoning administrator, but by the Planning Commission. And then if you didn't like it, after we did whatever we did to it, you could certainly turn it down in your consent calendar. So if there's any questions, I'll take them, but that was the genesis of how we got to where we are.
Well, thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this item?
Honorable Mayor and Councilman, my name's Stephanie Elliott. I am a building owner at 864 and 870 Production Belaise. That picture was quite interesting. She took it on a day when there was parking. And this gentleman here just referred to, "Well, in the evening." In the evening, it's not any better. We have people that work come home to their homes in that area, and they all park on the streets. We have Hickson Building, who has about seven buildings on that street now, and they have 100 employees working around the clock. It's jammed all the time. Parking is a big issue there. Basically, what the comments I had made, almost every one of you hit on the bullet points, and I believe that you ought to call a tasting room with food preparation what it is, a bar and a restaurant, and that the square footage, when you're talking about square footage, I've seen it happen over and over, they start out with this little spot, and then they take some of the parking and make big patio areas or put table and seating, and all of a sudden, you're dealing with 1,700 square feet. Well, when you have manufacturing, that would be one, and when you have retail, I think you have 44. So it's a huge difference. It's not manufacturing area or use. And the other thing that's happening in those areas, I mean, I love the coffee shops, I love all the wine tasting and brewing, and that idea is kind of cool because the area is changing. But the real problem is, is that the new form of advertising is pop-up parties, and our area is heavily impacted by that. And what happens, it's advertised, so new businesses advertise this way, or if they're trying to have a sale, all of a sudden, there's a pop-up sudden there's a pop-up party, there's a gazillion of people, and you have forklifts and baby strollers going like this, and it's chaos, the streets are closed down, our property's been heavily damaged by people driving on our sprinklers parking, people peeing on our walls and our fences, and there's no police, there's no security, nothing. The city and the building owners are left with a mess, and it's a wine tasting room with entertainment, it's just a disaster. And I've paid the price, we were heavily impacted by a use change that was applied for, which was storage, and it turned into transient hotel, and our building was very impacted from all of that. So I'm hoping, actually, every one of your reviews were excellent, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Please come down.
Hello, my name is Gordon Wanlass, I own the building at 877 Production Place, and I just want to confirm for the record that, yeah, parking is incredibly impacted. About the only place you can find parking is at Coast Loi College, because they charge for it, so all the students park on our street. They're smart. The other thing is that we've owned our building for more than 20 years, and we don't intend on leaving. I live in Newport Beach, I like to work in Newport Beach, and if that area becomes residential, or gets rezoned, I'm going to have to move my business, and I'm not planning on doing that. I'd like to work with you, I'd like to keep Newport Beach a diverse area, we've got a lot of owner-occupied buildings there, a lot of interesting stuff, like you said, it used to be the boating central, it's still a bit of the Production Place Yacht Club, there's a lot of businesses there that want to stay and want to be involved with the city. So, thank you very much for considering this.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hi, my name's Kyle, I'm a business owner over at 1588 Monrovia, so, in that little yellow square. And we had a printout of the ordinance, just asked our customers what they thought about it, we collected 361 signatures of residents and people that work in the area that wanted this. Wondering where I should hand this off to, if you guys want to check it out?
They wanted it, or, excuse me, or not wanted it? Wanted it? Thank you.
That's all, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back, I don't see anybody wanting to discuss anything up here, so, anyone want to move this item? Make a motion? All right, we've got a, we've got a first, a motion and a second? Please vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion either. Motion?
Apologize, I move to oppose.
You mean motion to deny.
To deny the approval.
And I second it.
Mr. Mayor?
I didn't push my button here, but... I was gonna, I was gonna say, do we want to give more direction to staff as far as how to bring it back, or if to bring it back, or you want to just table it indefinitely?
Well, I'll amend my motion, if I may, to say, let's incorporate it into the general plan discussion, I just think there's a future vision, envisioning, visioning of the city, and that's, as we've noted, an important area of the city for future, diverse future uses, and maybe that's the better...
So this is zoning, it has nothing to do with general plan, general plan already allows it, but you said, timing-wise, it'll come back at the same time?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the general plan will dictate the zoning changes ultimately.
If there are any, right.
If there are any, but, let's revisit it after that.
So you're amending your motion to bring it, revisit it when the general plan amendment is brought up?
Yes, in concurrence with the general plan. So I just want to be clear, what my motion is, so I'm voting to deny, not to vote no on the ordinance, right? Okay, so, a yes vote is to vote no on the ordinance?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Do I need to okay that?
Second needs to approve that mod, right?
Is the second or okay with the amendment to the movement?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously 7-0 to not introduce the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 10. Mr. Harp, do we have a staff report for us?
Well, so just briefly, back on April 10th, 2018, Ms. Prejej served the city of Newport Beach with a letter that alleged she, there's a violation of the Brown Act related to Mr. Kiff's employment. Ms. Prejej in her letter, she cites Section 549, 60.1 of the Government Code, but reading her letter, we think she cited the wrong section, because the action taken on the April 10th, 2018 meeting would have cured any violation of the Brown Act. So, looking at her letter, we interpreted it as having her demand fall under Section 549, 60.2 of the Government Code, and in this case, the city has several options of what you can do. What City Manager's Office and City Attorney's Office is recommending is that, under, under the Government Code, you can approve an unconditional commitment letter within 30 calendar days of your receipt of the allegation that there was a Brown Act violation, in essence, saying that you're making a commitment that, that there won't be any, that you, there, that you will comply with the Brown Act. We think that this is the right way for you to go, because it conserves limited public resources by preventing Ms. Prejej, or any other person, from initiating unnecessary litigation against the city. It doesn't admit there was a violation of the Brown Act, and the City Manager's Office and City Attorney's Office are adamant that there wasn't a violation of the Brown Act. It just basically prevents anyone from filing a lawsuit against the city, and we think that's the course of action you should take, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have regarding this matter.
All right, thank you. Well, seeing no comments from up here, I'll take it out to the public. Anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, it was good to see in the lobby that there is an amended attachment A, and that the letter that the council is going to send to Ms. Prejej within 30 days has the new paragraph four, which is rather lengthy, and is actually responding to the letter that she sent to the city council, which is what is called a cure or correct letter, and is explaining what the city council did to correct the possibility that there was a Brown Act violation. The first paragraph of the letter remains strange, it says, "We have received a cease or desist letter." As I explained at some length in writing, the city did not receive a cease and desist letter, and as I can make out, the letter never mentions that, it never asks the city to cease or desist anything, it asks the city to correct a mistake it made in the past, not to do something in the future. So the first paragraph is very strange, acknowledging a letter that was never received, and also very strange is the date at the top of the letter, since this was revised today, and it's dated April 24, and I believe today is May 8. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none, bring it up back, I see no one up here wanting to comment. Mayor Protim O'Neill.
Sure, and this is an easy one, to vote for anything other than this letter, frankly, is a waste of taxpayer money, because it would allow the sender of the letter to file an unnecessary lawsuit, so, I move recommendation B1.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
And just to confirm, it'd also include subpart A as part of the action, which is just the general sequoia finding.
The motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Hurdman voting no.
All right, next item, attorney-client privilege waiver. Anyone like a staff report on this? Any clarification?
Yeah, I think it's worth, I think it's worth hearing.
So, just to give some quick, quick background on this, it was recently discovered that there are two email communications between a council member and the city attorney that had been disclosed to a third party. Under California law, a client, which is the city council as a whole, has the right to refuse to disclose and to prevent any other person from disclosing confidential communications between the city and council members and the city attorney. Now, that privilege is held by a majority of the city council, and no single council member has a right to waive that privilege. Given that the information has already been disclosed to a third party, though, and we don't know how widely distributed, our office is recommending that the city council waive the privilege in regards to these two particular emails. Item's a little bit unusual, in that the public does not know the substance of the emails, which can't be discussed until there's been a waiver of the privilege, so my recommendation to you would be to take public comment, have the city council discuss the general issue of the waiver of the privilege, and then vote on the matter, and have any council members who would like to make a brief statement, make the statement after the privilege is waived, if that's the way you decide to go.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no comments up here, I will ask the public to please chime in if they'd like to, any speakers on this item? See, okay. Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, as the city attorney explained, it's still difficult to comment on this, since we don't know what we're commenting about. I would, however, mention, I would guess, that the email we're talking about was the city attorney communicating to one of the city council people, his interpretation of how laws are applied in Newport Beach, and I find it strange that this public in general does not know how the city attorney interprets laws in Newport Beach, such as this example, this afternoon, we had the closed session, topic employee appointment of a city manager. It would be exceedingly useful and helpful to the public, it would reduce rumors and so forth, if the city attorney would tell not just you, but the public, which you are allowed to do, as he explained, you are allowed to waive the privilege, you are the client, to let us know how our city attorney interprets the law, and is advising you in the closed session as to what you're allowed to talk about there and not. In writing, I provided you examples from the city of Ventura, where the city attorney and the district attorney, they're both very open about how they interpret the law, I don't know why there's such secrecy about it in Newport Beach, I don't think it serves anybody well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Joy Brenner. I don't think we know the specifics of this, and so we really can't speculate on it, but what I can say from a general standpoint is, it's refreshing to have someone from the city council be upfront and honest and tell the public something, because we feel like we're in the dark about most things that go on here, especially the things that go on in closed study session. And I believe you have the right to share with us a great deal of the information from that, you don't share with us personnel issues, and you don't share with us specifics that are confidential, but there's no reason you can't come back from those study sessions and tell us the context of what you're talking about in general, what sort of things apply to the citizens of Newport Beach, and how we need to understand that. I would charge that it's your responsibility to be telling us a great deal more than you're telling us all along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Mayor Protim O'Neill.
I move staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hurdman? Councilman Hurdman, excuse me. Councilman Hurdman?
I'm not quite sure what I can say and what I can't say. After the vote? Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am.
First of all, thank you, fellow council members, I appreciate that. I made a mistake, it was me that everybody's talking about here, all right? There was a communication between myself and our city, our city attorney, that should have taken place, but there's one little piece of it that shouldn't have taken place. All I can do is assure my colleagues up here that this will not happen again, and I will be much more, use a great deal more caution in terms of using my city email account versus my personal email account. I goofed, all right? And I admit it, and I apologize, and I thank you for the action that you took tonight.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
No, I'd like to make a statement as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, just so everyone understands, the vote we just made is remarkably rare, and to the extent that Mr. Hurdman is referencing his personal versus public, I'd like to just make a very quick note, you can't share attorney-client communication on any device, let alone private or public. Okay. So, it's important to put this in context, so that everyone understands what we're talking about, and so that everyone understands where we've, what's happened here. So, as some of you may recall, Phil Greer is a lawyer, who filed a lawsuit against our city and our city attorney. The only money damages sought in Mr. Greer's lawsuit are costs of suit, which include attorney's fees. The only person, frankly, who can even financially profit from this lawsuit is Mr. Greer, as the lawyer seeking attorney's fees. The first privileged email that we can now disclose contains a lengthy email sent by Councilmember Hurdman to our city attorney, to which our city attorney responded, and then two hours later, Mr. Hurdman forwarded those emails to Phil Greer, saying, "Here's Aaron's response to the email I sent him tonight in front of you, is that good?" I honestly have never heard of a lawyer who's suing a city inducing an attorney-client privilege breach. Councilmember Hurdman also sent an email to our city attorney, where he recounted legal advice and opinion that Mr. Harp provided concerning the litigation that Mr. Greer filed. Mr. Hurdman sent a blind copy of that email to Mr. Greer. In my decade-plus of litigating civil disputes, I have never, ever heard of a breach of the attorney-client privilege like this. I have also never heard of a city council member actively undermining the financial tax, the finances of a city by working with and colluding with an attorney suing the city to ensure that that's, that that attorney can someday collect attorney's fees. I just, it's, it's just remarkably disappointing, and I, it's, I don't, it's more than a goof, it just is.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who vote over the prevailing side.
All right, are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.